All kinds of different opportunities to try to find funding for that. Obviously, the governor's office is a place to start. Unfortunately, they won't return my phone calls. So we'll keep trying. But do have a meeting a week from this Friday with our congressional delegation. Show them what we're trying to do, why we're trying to do it. Congress does not give earmarks anymore as they have in the past that identifies specific projects, which we would certainly benefit from that, I believe. But on the other hand, they give the grants to the state. And so if we can identify some areas where we might be able to qualify for grants and be able to use that as matching funds for the governor, I think we could make our goal of 2021, 2022 of having that paid for without having to put an additional burden on the taxpayers of Hot Springs. So as we go through tonight, those are things that are looming far in the future. But we've got to get through year 2020, and that's what we'll be looking at. And Misty is going to pull up first our revenues, and we'll be looking at those first and showing how and where we get the money to operate as a city. So I'm going to turn things over to Misty. One other final thing I would like to be done here by no later than 8:30 tonight. Some of us all have to get up and go to work tomorrow. Some of us have been here, a meeting, emotional high intensity meeting of public work since 3:00. So appreciate if we could kind of set that as a goal tonight.
Thank you, George. As in years past, it's easiest to get through the revenue. So we're going to be nice on the first night. We're going to get, hopefully, all the way through the revenue and all the funds that we projected, and then maybe hit a couple of the easier expenses and then jump into the Thursday. If you have any questions at any time, stop me. I brought my laptop in, so if we have any questions about year-to-date dollar amounts that you see in the reports that you have for collection, or if you're wondering what kind of things go into a certain revenue, we can pull that up. So just generally ask any questions. The reports that you have are what come from our Banyan Fund Accounting Software. When Nolan started, we found it easier to create spreadsheets, so we can go back farther than just the last two years and also put some notes in that we can refer to that Banyan doesn't allow us to do. So although these are two different sources, all the numbers should match exactly. Although, the mayor has made a couple changes to some of the revenue projections, which were noted on the mayor recommended changes. So as we go through these reports today and match them with the ones that you have in your spiral bound books in revenue, we're going to talk about an increase to the water transfer to the general fund of $20,000, a solid waste transfer to the general fund of $10,000, increasing the library allotment from the county by $5,000, and increasing the Southern Hills Golf Course Tournament revenue by $2,000. And we'll talk about each one of those as we get to it. But those are some differences from what you see than what we have here. The first thing that funds, the two largest sources of revenue for the general fund are our property taxes and our general sales and use tax. Property tax is calculated by taking our prior year levied amount. We have the ability to add CPI and growth. Those are figures that come to us from the state and the county. I had Sue Gange review these estimations that I have here. She changed my prior year levy amount by a few dollars. I know you were writing that down, Bob, and I hadn't updated it yet. So I pulled up her email, and I went from $5.44 or something to $5.13. So the total amount that we can levy in 2020 is $1,182,939. The way the mill levy is assessed to individual property owners is determined by our total value divided by our total request. So although the dollar amount that we're requesting is increasing over last year and the year before, you'll notice that our mill levy has gone down, and it's the exact same in 2020 as in 2019, and that's due to the growth in our area. So although we don't get a dollar-for-dollar bang for growth, it does help all of our taxpayers when our tax base grows, because the mill levy is the amount each person will pay on each $1,000 of property value. So in 2020, we saw no change to our mill levy, and we're projecting $1,147,500. The historic collection rate runs 97% to 98% of the total levy. So that's why we don't put the full amount in there, because we never have historically collected 100% of our amount. We do collect when you don't pay general property taxes for all prior years. So this is where the difference between those two numbers comes. And as you can see, there's some anomalies. I'm not sure in 2015, but if somebody sells something big and they owe a lot of property taxes, we are able to collect that. This is a hard number to estimate. 20 seems reasonable. We've hit that in 2018. I think our projected amount in 2019 or our year-to-date amount is looking pretty good to hit our 15 projection, and so we bumped it up to $20,000 of 2020. Mobile home tax, all of these get remitted to us from the county, so we don't do any hands-on calculation or billing. When they collect it, they send us a remittance statement. And property taxes are collected twice a year, but then delinquents anytime throughout the year, especially when we're selling property. The next largest source of revenue in our general fund is the general sales and use tax. We're estimating $980,000 there, another one that's hard to estimate, but looking historically, we feel fairly confident that we'll be able to reach that. Many of you may remember a warning given by Yvonne Taylor from the Municipal League regarding some sales and use tax that cities got for internet service. It's not internet sales, it's internet service. So like Golden West would tax the internet service that you were provided. That went away in July of this year. They no longer will be collecting that. And I think her estimate as a hit to our community was either $25,000 or $40,000, depending on the percentage of loss. We did not subtract any from this number in hopes that the internet sales tax is going to adjust that difference, and we're going to come out similar to where we have in the past. So we have a fairly confident opinion that we'll reach 980 and maybe even a little bit above. Any questions on that?
Yeah, Misty, with the 2018 amount is pretty substantial, and that was before the internet tax was in. Would there be, you know, and again, this is an estimate, would you feel comfortable in raising that by $10,000?
I would, except for the loss that we're projecting with the, and not knowing how that's going to affect us. So we are looking at an increase, but we're also looking at a decrease and not knowing the exact implications. I'm much more comfortable with 900, maybe. Another five, maybe, not another 10 at this time until we know.
Is there any thought from the council on that?
Why, what is your thinking to raise that $10,000?
We don't have a full year of noting how much we gain from internet sales. That's just something that happened, and it's been a windfall for the state to get those tax revenues from internet sales. But that is offset by that amount estimated by the Municipal League that the services that we would, would not be taxed, so we wouldn't get those. So there's a potential that we could, you know, if a lot of, if there's a lot of internet, we just don't know.
Right.
That we could gain a lot. And I look at 2018, we're up to income of $992.
Which is a very, it's peak.
And that was before we had internet, we were gaining those internet sales.
Well, half the year it was. It started in July of 2018. It's half the year.
So that's half the year.
On what you're showing for the last four years, it would be its peak. So it would be, you would think that that would be an anomaly.
Well, and typically, when it comes to estimating, at least from my position, I want to be modest when I'm estimating revenue. I want to be as close to reasonable as possible, but I'm going to err on the side of modesty. I want to under project revenue. And when it comes to expenses, we use the opposite.
And I would have to agree with you, especially looking at ATB, just, it's, right now, it just sits as an anomaly to me. And you don't know what the loss is going to be on the internet stuff. And I would rather be on a safe, close to, close to a reasonable.
We're still estimating $15,000 increase over the year before, so we were putting an increase in there, just didn't want to be too.
No, I would, personally, I'd have to agree. Only because I like being on a safe end. I'd rather have all of a sudden got more than, you know, down on the mouth because I...
Yeah, in November, saying, "Oh, my God."
And can I ask a question? I mean, as it stands right now, is there, what is, I mean, what is the deficit overall that we...
Well, we're just on my revenue tonight, but we're down to about $55,000 in the general So yeah, $5,000 isn't going to make a huge difference. Any other comments on that?
Thank you.
Amusement taxes come from...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, absolutely.
When you projected the 206, or the 965 for 2019 and the projected for 2020, did you kind of take into account the loss of ShopCo and British Brothers?
No. And we talked about dropping our projection down for 2020, but now with the new, if ShopCo wouldn't have been filled, we would have done that. There's no way for us to know exactly how much, but we know that that was an anchor for our community, and it was a big generator of sales tax for us.
Are these small businesses?
Oh, yeah.
Are those as small as ours?
So it's really hard to know each business's impact, because they don't report that, we're not allowed to gain information at that level. It's considered proprietary because it's related to just their specific business. But had we not heard that Baumgar's was going to fill that hole in our community, we probably would have lowered that number a little bit. We did consider it. Good question. Amusement taxes are small. They come to us from the county. That's an estimate. It's been fairly consistent. No changes to any of those laws. We're going to keep it the same. Penalties, interest, and delinquent taxes, that's for property taxes. Those are penalties that they charge if people don't pay them on time. These liquor and beer licenses, 2016, if you remember, we were able to sell the one that came up when the VFW closed. So that was an anomaly there. These are the annual liquor and beer licenses, no change to that. Animal licenses, so these are licenses people pay for chickens and dogs. All other city licenses are listed here. $8,500 for building permits, that's based on a year-to-date number and increased 2018 amounts. Trenching permits, pretty small. We do hope to get grants throughout the year, but we don't budget for any of those things. We'll add that to our budget when they come in. Gets us down to bank franchise taxes, and those historically run around that $3,500 figure. That's a fair estimate. Pro-rate license fees, that comes to us from the county and their remittances. So does the liquor tax reversion that comes from the state. No changes to any of these laws, so we're estimating similar to what we've received before. Motor vehicle licenses, local government highway and bridge funds, county road tax, get that once a year. Our payment in lieu of taxes from the Brookside and Evans, that's been all over the place as we wait for them to finish their audits before they can calculate the amount that they pay to us. So we typically, at the end of the year, are booking receivables based on an estimate calculation that we come up with, using some information that Greg can give us before their audits are done, and then collect that revenue in the following year. Here is the increase for the library allotment from the county. I believe there was some conversation when they were discussing their budget request this year to potentially increase that amount to $25,000. We're hoping for that. The mayor has a plan. If they don't approve $5,000 more, then we're going to talk to the library board about raising the car cost for county residents to make up that difference. One way or another, they're wanting their part-time help this day. We estimated it costs about $6,800 to do that. We've got to raise some money to pay for that increase, so.
Just a quick question on that. Is their request due to cost of running the library itself, an increase or a loss in the last few years?
Yeah. She has, the library director, Dawn Johnson, has done some calculations regarding the county's participation in the library services, and she presented a request for much greater. I wish I could remember the amount. Do you remember how much, 60, 70?
I believe it's $60,000 that it costs us to serve the residents.
And that's based on facts and data.
That's just based on the actual usage.
So her request is where we...
So our request of, you know, the residents of Hot Springs are supporting the library. The library board has been hesitant to recommend increases because they feel that we have a duty to provide library for the entire community. And, but I think we need to allow those that live outside the city limits to shoulder some of the costs. Those that live outside Rapid City, I believe, pay well over $100 a year to use the library.
Our library costs $5 for county.
Our library costs $5.
So we're not talking about a huge increase, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Sale of maps and publications is when people come in here and ask for copies or things of that nature, not very much. Reimbursements include a various number of things. There are years where, you know, people have bought, the city has bought things, and people have had to reimburse the cost of it. $1,000 is a moderate amount, but we do stick a lot of things in this reimbursement. If you hit a fire hydrant and you have to reimburse us for the cost of that, it could go in there, those types of things. Our Golden West patronages are those checks that we get from being members of the cooperative. Those come once a year. I don't believe we've gotten them yet this year, but that's a fairly good estimate. And it goes up every year, so if we wanted to pump that up by a couple hundred dollars, I wouldn't be against it, but it wouldn't make a big difference.
I like the amount. It is good to...
Yeah. Well, we have a lot, when we pay our phone bill, I bet we pay a lot more than you do, so. Police services, they do some skip tracing or background checks, and they get a few dollars every time they do that. That's, we got $32 in 2018, so I'm not sure if that's an over or an underestimate. Just depends on how many times they're asked to do those and if they charge. Other highways, streets, and roadways, we do some recycling. They sort the piles when we have free dump days and keep things on hand. And they decide to sell it when the price is right. So we had a good income in 2018 because the price was higher and they brought much more stuff there, but I don't want to overestimate too much there. Park electricity, people pay $15 per day to hook up to park electricity. Park application fees, $20 per day. Our rec program fees had an increase, and then we have a new director who is very diligent about making sure that anyone who's participating is paying the fee. So we're pretty comfortable with that revenue expectation, even though it's higher than years past based on what we've charged before and the increases.
And Misty, I'd like to go back to the park application fee, just to make sure the council is aware. Past councils have avoided the fee for the Arts and Crafts Festival and the Farmer's Market. We probably will get more and more requests. I don't know. I mean, it's not going to make probably a lot of difference on the revenue, but it does take city crews who spend hours cleaning things up and so forth. So that's something to keep in mind.
The trees and the grass and the toilet paper in the bathrooms. It's a nominal fee.
It's not, it's not a big...
It's something I think we should visit. I don't know what happens to plants anyway, to wear and tear on the grass.
Right.
Cool water, and you have to go afterwards.
It doesn't pay for the expense of keeping the park.
No, there's a lot more maintenance to the water when you have no usage to abundant usage at a point. You're not even covering your maintenance costs on water, the sprinklers, the toilets. That's something that, I'm not trying to hurt anybody as far as having functions in the park, but we do have to be realistic about what it costs us to maintain, keep updated, so we can keep offering everyone who comes a spot.
Yeah.
And so you actually kind of show yourself at a toe by actually letting you do it for free. George, is that $20 per vendor or $20 per day?
Per day.
Per day.
That they reserve the...
So it's, yeah, it's not a, you know, it's not a significant amount, and the goodwill and the things that these events bring in is good, but I wanted the council to make sure, you know, we understand the impact when we go to waive the fees or against that there are costs that are associated with that.
So the Arts and Crafts things would be like, that's $60 to put in.
$20 per day.
Yeah.
Put in three days.
Which is minimal. So the park electricity and the park application fee were both, those numbers are increased because we're expecting to generate this from the people who... And if you look year-to-date, we are already this year. So your reports show year-to-date amounts, and then if you look where we're at year-to-date, you might feel a little more comfortable with these estimates. The Mueller Center changed their vending commissions in 2016. We have a 10% agreement with Hayden Enterprises. They make semi-annual payments for that. Airport vending commission, we get checks from Coke. We get 15% of Coke sale checks quarterly. Airport concessions, they sell oil and windshield washer fluid. Airport fuel sales is new in 2019. I have very limited data to estimate this revenue. I took the last 30 days from the software that we just got, reporting fuel sales at the airport, and I timed that by 12, and that's how I came up with this number. So nothing changes. I know Ed wanted to project $72,000 or $75,000 in expense for airport fuel, but I just can't justify increasing the revenue, being modest and looking at the data we have so far. So as this, as our costs for airport fuel go up, we should be able to offset those additional expenses with revenue that we've generated, since we anticipate a small percentage or dollar amount that comes back of each gallon of fuel sales to the city, so.
And I think this is pretty conservative, based on when we did the research, purchasing the fuel system, there was substantially more fuel that they served, sold, but we want to make sure.
But you never know what the winter's going to be like in the, our freshen units, the tech guy. What do you mean, I'm sorry, what do you mean, a small percentage comes back?
50 cents or 75 cents on each gallon? I can't remember. We up charge the fuel.
It's, well, actually, it's based on the price of the fuel.
That's the problem.
So right now, for the price that we paid, we are getting a little over a dollar profit per gallon.
But we have a set price of $4.75.
Yeah, it's $91.
Yeah. So what do we sell it for right now? Do you know?
$4.75.
$4.75. And they'd like to keep that consistent, so we arrives based on the cost of fuel. And we might have to address that dollar amount if the cost of fuel goes up a lot.
Yeah. And that, that's, what we do at the airport is look at the prices of surrounding airports and try to keep ours competitive, so that those pilots that are flying cross-country, they're conscious of wanting to fill the airplanes up, they'll stop in years opposed to going to Shadras or someplace else.
So if you could land your plane a buffalo chip, you could get it for $3.50 to be honest. What'd you say?
Okay. Cemetery sale lots, $2,500. I don't know. In 2018, we sold a lot, but in years past, we hadn't sold so much, so I'm not sure what the run on the cemetery lots were, but $2,500 seems like a reasonable estimate.
So what? You're not sure what the cost of the lot is right now?
Oh, I know what it is. It's $125 goes to the general fund, and $125 goes to perpetual care. I'm just not sure why so many more lots were sold in 2018 than had happened in years past.
More people die.
Yeah. More people want to be buried in our cemetery. Animal control fines, we saw that go down. We're hoping 300 for next year. Library fines, it's also another one that's gone down since we started tracking it, 4,000.
Can we go back to animal control fines?
Yeah.
There's many dogs that I hear on loose on the scanner.
As many calls as we get.
And that's all we get.
I've talked to George, as many calls as we get. One of our goals for collecting revenue is to make sure that we are every chance we get, and we do have room to improve there. And we want to be fair in bringing back your dog if we know where it belongs and give you a warning, but we also...
How much does it give a warning?
Right. We also need to...
Is that a progressive fine, like on your second, third time? A lot of towns, it's one fine first time.
Yeah. I believe our animal control officer likes to give a warning the first time, and then it's a set amount for the fine.
So it'd be four, four a day?
The first time.
And I agree with that.
It's fair.
You know, I agree with that. But is it a progressive fine?
No. After, after they've verified, it's like, it's a one set fine. So every time your dog got picked up, you'd have to pay that fine. It doesn't increase for the third or fourth offense.
I think you should.
Well, that's an ordinance change, and we're here to talk about budgets, so.
Oh, but why would we be gone together?
We have a lot of good ideas about what should change, what really needs to happen before we change everything, is we just have to start enforcing the ones we have and see what impact that has, and then we can talk about changes where we need to make them.
I like your thinking.
Library, because we can write all the rules. If we don't enforce the ordinance, we're not going to collect anything anyway. Library fines, 4,000, just because I'd like to see it go up, but because it hasn't historically, we're going to leave it at that number. Miscellaneous revenue, we don't project anything for that. Interest earned, we purchased CDs this year and started getting interest on our checking account, so our interest earned number is higher. Mueller Civic Center building rent is another one where council needs to be very careful is they approve waivers of fees. That, last year, we put it on a $50,000 roof. This year, we have over $100,000 in roof repair requests for the Mueller Center. That's the revenue that we generated, that facility, for rentals. We have, we, yeah, we have, we won't pay for the roof. We have reviewed those rates, and we changed them last year. It was a very small increase. Another place where we need to make sure that we're charging the fees that we have in place every time that we get an opportunity to do it and not waive them. Airport rentals stay the same. Airport lease and hay revenue, right now, that's staying the same. The agreement that was entered into last year was written so that he could have it another year, and he's choosing to. So unless hay prices change significantly, we're expecting similar.
I'm thinking on that. It should go up because of all the moisture we got there, and we had a lot of cuttings this year.
But then wouldn't the cost of hay go down? Like, would the feedlot will pay for hay is what we end up getting. So if there's a lot of hay, then they can...
Probably down here.
Library inter loan items, based on year-to-date, a little bit higher. Library damaged and lost items, little bit lower. Library copies, we got a new copy machine, and they increased their fees. One of the fees we want to change here at City Hall is our copies should at least match the library. We should offer it cheaper here. And they did. You purchased a new copy machine for the library that now copies in color. That was last year, so projecting an increase. Library cards, that's just something I wanted to highlight. If you, that's the $5 for the people from the county that pay for cards. If you doubled that, you would double this number. So as we talk about 6,600 of new expenses in the library and a way to pay for them, doubling the cost of library cards would only get you another $2,800 right now. That's why that's highlighted. The DARE program, the revenue we're anticipating is 2,000. We have a 2,000 offsetting expense in the police department. This program is fully funded by donations, and we have more than 2,000 available for next year already. Liquor, these are all of our liquor operating licenses. So the city currently charges 7.5% for malt beverage and 10% for liquor and wine. We discussed, although this would be another conversation, and we didn't project any increases, but we're discussing increasing it to a flat 10% for all.
You know how long it's been at that price?
Forever.
I owned a liquor store for like 15, 16 years, and that's been that price ever since then. ever since then.
So we're talking about a flat ten percent for everything. It would give us some additional revenue. Um, that's on my list, sir, group of finance officers, this is often something that's, uh, discussed, and ten to twelve is pretty standard, so we wouldn't be that far out as far as others in the state go if we were to do that.
Was any of that seed been planted with booze, beverages, and hotels?
That's a different fee. That's, uh, we do something different, that liquor lodging and dining, or bedboards and bedboard and booze, or what is the other one it's called, municipal grocery receipts tax? It's got all kinds of names, but it's all that same percentage, and that's, that's not the same as this.
And that'll be, this will be a discussion that I want to try to bring before the council here shortly, as we, before we start the new year, to raise those, those fees.
But we are projecting revenue right now based on what we have.
I think we're gonna raise it to twelve percent.
We can discuss it. Um, but where it is current, so hopefully that'll cause us to have underestimated revenue, but at these projections, we, it's the way things currently are. You may notice, we recycle these codes, so the three-six-eight-oh-one or three-six-eight-oh-two, sometimes those codes belong to other businesses that no longer have the need for a license, so we recycle them. So as you look back in history, you may see some differences, but I can tell you, I work with Mary real closely, and she does all the billing for those percentages, and we're fairly comfortable with these numbers. American Legion, fifty-five hundred. Urban County, five hundred. Woolies, fifteen hundred. Frankie's Place, two thousand. Hot Springs Vault, forty-five hundred. Uh, Winter Circle, forty-five hundred. Sancho's, one hundred. Yes Way, twenty-five thousand. Um, The Springs Restaurant, fifty dollars. The Burdette House is letting hers go, she's not renewing. Red Rock River Resort, four hundred. Uh, we have nothing in for Shopko at this time, not sure if Bombards is gonna sell beer or liquor. Well, they won't be able to sell liquor, but beer. Take That's, eight thousand. Dakota Mart, twenty-five hundred. Lynx Dakota Mart, that's Dakota Mart Gas, Lynx Dakota Mart, thirty thousand. Uh, Earth Goods, one thousand. Corner Pantry, twenty-five hundred. They're selling a lot less than that Battle Mount Convenience did. Stay USA, a hundred. Pizza Hut, thirty, I'm sorry, Mike's Place. Sunny Superfoods, thirty-five thousand. Changing Seasons Floral, we're not estimating anything, although we do collect a little bit. China Buffet, same thing. Uh, Big Ten Pizza, five hundred. Dollar General, five thousand.
How come you don't have anything for China Buffet, because they sell beer?
Yeah, they're very minimal, though, the amount, so we could put forty-five or fifty dollars in there, we just, yeah, she's not selling much, and, um, I think we're like six dollars year-to-date or something.
Just, just one question, Miss D, that didn't see before. Obviously Shopko's gone down. That, uh, three thousand that they had, I would assume would be picked up by some other store?
We, I don't know if Bombards is gonna do that or not.
Well, I mean, I know Bombards doesn't, but, uh...
The shoppers are going somewhere to...
They go to the...
I just wouldn't know where to put that and not comfortable projecting that and to where it's gonna go.
But again, that's a little bit of a wiggle room that we see.
Um, so then we get into the cable TV franchise fee, who just renegotiated that contract, left the amount the same, that's paid quarterly. Recovery of prior year expenditures, this is where our workers' comp audit refund money goes, and anything else that maybe was refunded from purchase from the year before. Uh, operating transfers in, we originally had two-ten estimated there. We talked about adding twenty thousand from water. Our transfers last year were a hundred and five from both water and wastewater, and nothing from solid waste. This year, um, we are projecting a hundred and twenty-five from water. The reason for the increase in water, um, is twofold. One being all the help the general fund employees gave for the water projects that we did in this year, and then two, because of the projected, um, net position of the water fund afterwards, after, uh, this year's expenses. And then for the wastewater fund, because they have had such significant, um, capital improvement expenses, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, we spent one point one million dollars. We have some, um, issues with the building and the wet well that we have to fix this year, and they're projecting large expenses. We did not want to hit the wastewater fund with the one twenty-five this year, but are projecting in two thousand and twenty-one that their transfer would also go up to one twenty-five.
Where's the transfers going to the general fund?
General fund.
What's it usually go to?
It goes to all the expenses of the general fund. When we get to the expenses of the general fund, there's twenty-nine departments in the general fund alone, so...
And since maintenance is one of those departments.
We do all the billing, the mailings, the servicing, the calls.
And that's one thing that, you know, with a small city like this, I'm really pleased with the cooperation that we have between the departments. Uh, maintenance stepped in and helped up on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth water project. They've also helped in on the, the Canton project, so we want to kind of encourage that, and, uh, it helps.
So if the street department helps the water or sewer or whatever, they get paid out of their budget, not the street department's?
No, they get paid out of the street department budget. We just cannot project salaries and budgets at that level, so they still get paid out of streets, yeah.
So that's one of the trends.
So total revenue for the general fund, unless you saw anywhere else we could add money, is two million eight hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred dollars. And those are all our sources of revenue in that fund. All right, these are a little easier, we'll go through these a little faster. The two-one-one, that's our liquor lodging and dining, or the bedboard and booze, it's actually called the municipal grocery receipts tax now, so it's not LLB or Triple B, but people refer to it as the penny. Um, it is one percent sales tax on alcoholic beverages, eating establishments, lodging accommodations, ticket sales or admissions to places of amusement, athletic and cultural events. These taxes are remitted to the state, and then the state sends them back to us. We are projecting a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue, uh, in the two-one-one fund for next year. This is our additional sales tax fund. Um, the two percent sales tax that the city is, that the city gets, is split two-thirds into the general fund and one-third into the additional sales tax fund. Uh, this, uh, fund was established by city ordinance, and it's stated to be used for debt service, street improvements, street maintenance equipment, building construction, building upkeep and repair, and any other expenditure deemed necessary and approved by the common council. So our projection for the one-third amount of the general sales and use tax is four-hundred ninety thousand for two thousand and twenty. Uh, we did also purchase CDs in this fund, where we set aside money for future road reconstruction, so we estimate more interest there. The principal and interest collected is for our Back Nine Street Assessment and our Boulder Falls Street Assessment, and same for interest and penalty collected. These are our estimates, these don't include any penalties, these are our estimates. So that's why, uh, these numbers are higher, because penalties are added in there, but I can't estimate a penalty on just including the interest payments that are due to us. Again, I'm projecting a hundred percent collection here, so, um, it's difficult to know if everybody's gonna pay that or not, but...
How come it's so much lower than what you projected this year?
Um, you mean this one?
No, it's a hundred and sixty...
Because people are paying their principal balance down.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, the amount that they owe for the year is gonna be less than it was before. So, um, some people pay off in full. If you sell your house, you could pay it in full, so, you know, I'm just estimating based on the stuff I have now, but we could get a big payment in this year, and next year it could go down significantly. Six hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars is our total revenue projected for our two-one-two or additional sales tax fund. The bid fund, that's, uh, Business Improvement District, they, um, we established that fund by ordinance, and it involves all hotel and motel overnight lodging businesses in Hot Springs. They pass on a two-dollar additional charge to their guests, and the money's controlled by an advisory board of the bid members, and is used for advertising, marketing, promoting hot springs, and for improvements in hot springs. Um, they had some real good years here, and we haven't seen that same growth, so we are comfortable predict, projecting ninety-three thousand. This is a separate fund, no general fund dollars going here, they can spend what they have, they have a fairly decent cash balance right now. Um, we did implement a late fee to try to get more people to pay on time when we changed the ordinance in two thousand and eighteen, so we added a hundred dollars for late fees.
And just, uh, an update on that, I'm a little disappointed in some of the bid properties, the way they look. We've had one property with mattresses out behind it, weeds growing in the parking lot. I sent a email out to the bid board and said, uh, let's, uh, start policing our properties, because it benefits all of us to get more people staying here in Hot Springs. And I know I certainly wouldn't, would drive by if I saw a bunch of mattresses out in front of the motel, uh, that kind of speaks of bid bugs or, or some other kind of, uh, issue. So, uh, I'm a little disappointed in the way that bid board is functioning, that's something we need to keep an eye on as a council, to make sure that they're getting their heads out on time, and, uh, they collect a pretty substantial amount of marketing money, and it's an important, uh, aspect of our marketing.
The next one is our five-oh-one Capital Improvement Fund. This was established by city ordinances, and it's to account for financial resources used to pay for special projects throughout the community. Currently, the funds are designated for Light Up Our Town. Um, we did dispose of all the money in our Park Pavilion, so we could probably, um, get rid of that project over the next year. We had expenses in two thousand and eighteen, so, um, for that one. And then, uh, the baseball, T-ball improvements, which were approved by council, where the, um, the folks participating in baseball and T-ball for the recreation program waived their wages, but we transfer, um, the amount of the wages they would have received into this fund for the money to be spent for baseball and T-ball improvements. On your next council agenda, you have that calculated amount for this year to transfer in. Uh, we don't project any revenue in this fund, we supplementally appropriate after the money's there and then decide what projects they're gonna do. So we really, never will take money for any of these things, and any other project, um, that the council deems necessary, we can use this fund to create, uh, a place to account for those monies and keep them separate from the general fund. So our first enterprise fund is the water fund. We project twenty-five hundred for return check fees. The penalty amount that we're projecting is significantly higher than collected in the past. That's because with the change to our ordinance, we, um, changed from a percentage to a flat amount for penalties. When you don't pay on time, it's just ten dollars flat now. If you see year-to-date, we've collected much more than we had in the past, so we're comfortable with this six thousand projection. Uh, we separated CD interest earned from interest earned in the checking account. We purchased CDs for the reconstruction project in both the water and the wastewater fund, and so we're projecting additional interest earned. I have the principal collected in the water fund highlighted, because at some point, we will have repayments from the twenty-sixth street project, although I'm not comfortable estimating those amounts now. I don't know if we'll have those turned in in time to collect for next year, if it'll be the prior year. Uh, recovery of prior year expenditures or our payroll audits.
What time do they have to be turned in?
October. Everything has to be done, it has to be filed and turned in.
I think we should be able to get that done by October, don't you, Bob?
Uh, yes.
Um, metered in flat rate water, these are the sales from utility billing, we have eight hundred and fifteen thousand projected bulk water sales, it's hard to project that number. Uh, the water fill station, we did separate, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. We, we broke out bulk water sales and the water fill station sales, so we could track those separately. Um, that would include the increase and the decrease in those other numbers.
I need to ask about tapping.
Okay.
You have nothing down there, you, all this new building that supposedly going on in Hot Springs, they're gonna have tapping the water, I mean.
It'd be great if I knew how much that would be, but where are we at year-to-date for collection on that number? And your report's right there in front of you. Cause I don't have that pulled up, or at zero? Yeah, they're not being charged, it's not being charged. And I'm not sure who, well, I actually do know the department that's responsible for making sure that those fees get charged and assessed.
So we don't... Did somebody just talk to him?
I believe that he's been talked to about it.
Melanie, are we providing a look up? The competitors and all that stuff? Would, uh, did they want tap?
I'm sorry, I'm not responsible.
How would you just tap the whole?
Or who?
Oh, so in the theory construction for water?
There was a tap, I don't know why there is not one now.
There still is, it's written in our ordinance. When you apply for the tap application, I believe you're supposed to be charged that fee. Uh, I'm just not comfortable putting anything in there now, it's not responsible for collecting it. Hopefully, we do get to where we're collecting it, and there should be more. I believe it's a hundred and fifty dollars, does that sound right?
It depends, once it's a whole, you tell.
Okay. Uh, reconnect call-out fees, same thing, fifteen hundred is the estimate we're using. The fire sprinkler system, we charge quarterly, uh, for people that have that. Fall River water users, we've collected nothing year-to-date, and Tracy told me to leave that estimate at nothing. We've talked about that contract coming up. One of the things that, um, Jim Jones, who did our water rate study and reviewed this contract with us, mentioned is that, one, we need to not give water away, we need to charge a better price for it, and two, we should have a minimum amount, because whether they use it or not, we're, we're keeping it available for them, and we're required to provide it. But, um, Tracy agreed, we've collected nothing year-to-date, I shouldn't project any. If we get it, great, but we do, we will be working in the next six months or so to renegotiate that contract, and one of the things that we've been advised to do is make sure that there's a flat monthly amount that we get. There's not a current contract.
Otherwise, I have a recommendation back when we were all serving before.
It's not the current contract, so, they don't use it, they don't pay for it.
We do have, uh, corporate severe thunderstorm warning that's coming, and I don't know if anybody like me has got, has got any trucks.
Oh, I don't know, crack too, which may take a little break.
Let's take a little break, and, uh...
I do mention this.
My window's cracked.
So I better go.
Well, it's got a lot of bugs on it, George, what areas were they talking about?
Brainwash.
Uh, hot springs.
Those included?
Yeah, okay, yeah. It looks like it's, uh, kind of south and, uh, west of town, but it, it looks like it'll get, uh, get us a little bit.
I don't know.
And it's paint.
I'm glad you said that, because I know that's my practice.
Yeah.
I should have walked.
Good, and you?
You're supposed to.
You're not human out there.
It'll get cold here real quick. Good, how's Allison?
Good.
No, thanks. Didn't you ask me that just a little bit ago?
I did.
George, is Fall River water users getting anything presently? Are they getting water credits?
They aren't currently. This year, they haven't bought any, but they're interested in having some in the past, so we have to look at doing a new contract with them. Because if we're going to provide water for them, they're going to need to pay us a yearly stipend to have that.
Like a rechanger.
Yeah. So, and obviously with a wet year like this, I don't anticipate, you know, a lot of times livestock watering drives some of their usage. Got plenty of goodies up here, so help yourself when you.
I'll probably add to my retirement fund.
Okay.
It kind of looks like your retirement fund has been depleted a little bit.
It has been.
Well, that's a good thing.
It is.
For that.
Yeah. They say I'll live longer, but, you know, I hope what kind of living I'm having at retirement.
Oh, shut, oh, okay. Somebody gets to walk their.
Find out.
Will you live longer? No, it'll just.
Longer, but I can't do nothing.
I was telling Bob today, he and our airport manager had a little accident at the Cheyenne Rodeo.
Any questions on the water fund? Revenue projections? Next is the wastewater fund.
I did have a question.
Okay, that's okay.
That sales of the property, municipal properties.
Yes.
Is that like that water tank we sold up on the hill?
Yep.
How come that's not on?
Twenty seventeen is when we sold it.
Oh, good.
And there's the amount.
De-bought that long ago? I thought it was just this year.
Oh, no, it was at the end of twenty seventeen when we had that auction. We haven't had an auction since twenty seventeen. All right. Projections for twenty twenty for our wastewater fund, interest earned, and again, we separated CD interest. We purchased a CD for infrastructure improvements in the wastewater fund also, and we're projecting interest revenue from that. Recovery of prior year expenditures is our workers' comp payroll audits we get every year. Sewer charges is where the user fee goes for all sewer, people that are hooked up to the sewer service. And then other sewer revenue, that's the Mueller Center RV dump station donations and Fall River Health Services monitoring, although we've stopped doing that monitoring now, right?
Yes, they're in compliance now.
So we have seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in revenue projected for the wastewater fund. I thought we did all of these freeze paying things last year, but it's not all working, so we're just fixing them. Okay, solid waste fund, collection fees are a hundred percent transferred to the vendor, the one who provides our solid waste collection. That contract, current contract expires, I put my note in there and I put the date, I believe it's twenty twenty-one. Hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then we also charge a small city fee to all users, and that fee is used to pay for our free dump weeks, our refuge totes, and now to go towards the transfer to the general fund.
That's just two dollars household, right?
Two twenty-five?
Two twenty-five.
Does that sound right? Two hundred and seven thousand is our projected revenue in the solid waste fund. Six twenty is our golf course fund. This fund is separated into two different departments for expenses, but they share the same revenue. In twenty twenty, we are projecting a hundred and twenty-five thousand in green fees, sixty thousand in season passes, five thousand in punch cards, twenty-two hundred in cart trail fees, eighteen thousand for cart storage, seven thousand for tournaments. That's a two thousand dollar increase than the first projection. We had some concerns after looking at twenty eighteen's amount. It was after our audit, and we did discover that about forty-two hundred dollars worth of tournament fees were placed in green fees as opposed to tournaments when they were recorded at the golf course. So we hopefully have that fixed and they'll record it in the right place, and so we were comfortable raising that up just a couple more than what you have. You had five thousand in your books and the mayor added two thousand after reviewing it, so we have that at seven thousand. Hundred dollar room for rent, room rent for events, that's another fee we need to charge consistently. Beer sales, thirty-seven thousand, food, thirty-two thousand, clothing, fifteen thousand, equipment, nine thousand, rentals, range balls, seven thousand, cart rentals, seventy-five thousand, mini max handicap, five hundred, miscellaneous revenue, four hundred, those are miscellaneous gift shop sales. Recovery of prior year expenditures is our SDML workers' comp audit, three hundred. We don't list any other sources of revenue that we don't know of yet. We list an operating transfers in, and right now, this is the amount that their expenditures exceed their revenues. So we have to get revenue to match expenditure to pass a balanced budget instead of guessing that we're going to have other sources of revenue. We are committing, and this number can change, that's why it's highlighted, but we are committing to covering that from another fund within the city.
So I take it the hundred and some thousand dollars from the water and sewer, those things as golf course and Evan's ones?
Nope, this, the subsidies come out of our two-one-two fund, and those dollars go into our general fund, but it's a good question. The way the city and the finance office passes and approves these transfers in is when we pass our budget, we have to put in an amount that's going to reconcile so that their revenues match their expenditures for the year. But we don't transfer that money in right away. We wait until about November and we review where they're at with their revenue projections and where they're at with their expenditure projections, and we only transfer the amount needed to cover the expenses for the year. In years past, we've been able to make that a much smaller number, more so in the plunge than the golf course, but I believe it was ninety-five thousand we transferred in last year before the water and sewer subsidies, which are added to those figures. But that's what we're estimating right now. Our hope is that revenues exceed productions and expenses don't, and that they don't mean less.
No, I could ask you to go backwards, but that room for rent thing, could you explain that a little bit?
So they have a fee of, I think it's fifty or a hundred dollars. If I wanted to rent the clubhouse for a private event, she has been waiving that fee if she thinks she's going to make enough off food sales, but it's a fee that's listed and fixed and should be charged regardless.
Okay, I'm not picking on anyone person, but where did they get the authority to make that decision themselves?
I'm going to answer you. Did you get it from me?
We will get that fixed, I guess.
And like I said, I'm not.
Right.
I'm not trying to create a problem with somebody, but the idea is if you let one do it, and I've noticed that it's happened twice that you've said, you don't know why it's not being charged.
Doesn't have to be voted on by the council.
These are, you've set these and rates.
I mean, if somebody wants, yeah, wait, but it has to be voted.
You know, it's really fine line when you're running a department and you're pricing something for a party, it should be, if, my argument with it is it's a fixed flat fee and it has nothing to do with how much money you make off food sales, and so it's set and it should be, unless you want it to be written where somebody has the authority to waive it, but it should be.
And I agree, yeah, but it needs to be voted on by the council to eliminate anything.
The council should be given at least the opportunity to see whether or not waiving their fee is going to make a good deal, we would be able to bring in more tax money than normal. But if, without us even knowing or anybody knowing, then you end up like this.
Right, and I'm not sure how you feel about the city administrator position, but my understanding of that position is they supervise all the department heads. And so when we identify these things, we have a good, strong, human resource type candidate in that office who is going to help enforce these rules, because there's no way for us sitting in this back office here to know every time that room is rented at the golf course.
But if we have a set rule, it should be followed.
If it's not, there should be a written warning about it. It should be documented.
I'm not trying to be a horse of destiny, but the thing is, is two dimes make, you know, twenty cents, and I mean, after a long period of time, there is a major impact on.
And we have a big deficit in this spot.
Just to put it bluntly, this was discovered last year, it was addressed, but it wasn't fixed by the previous city administrator, and I'll just leave it there.
Okay. I don't know, like I said, I'm not trying to get somebody in trouble. My thing is, if you've got a path, you ought to stay on it.
How much discretion are you going to allow your clubhouse manager?
When it comes to pricing for things like that, if it's set by resolution or ordinance, you should charge it all the time unless you have permission from your council to not charge it.
You're not taking, you're not taking, you're not taking away anybody particular person's ability to make a good deal for it, but if it's put as an ordinance, it should be followed. And like I said, at the very least, if they really feel that by not charging would make the deal go through and should be followed, whoever can prove that we are going to do a better party or whatever the case is, where we make better tax money, then at least gives the opportunity to go back.
Right, so where you highlighted stuff is just different on ours, that's why you have it highlighted.
Yeah, because that stuff, so that's how you're tracking the.
All right, so with that, without that transfer in, three hundred. Three hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred is their estimated revenue. All right, Evan's plunge, another one of our enterprise funds. We bought the plunge in twenty fourteen. I think I bought fourteen, but. And actually, their subsidy last year was, we estimated larger, but we only transferred in forty-five thousand, so they're doing all right. Their revenue projections, I have highlighted adult admission. Because we, both in adult admission and child admission, we identified a decrease. It's going in the wrong direction. This is the year we've been on it the full year, but, so we talked, Chris and I talked a little bit about why that number is decreasing and what we can do, and she's got some ideas. The decrease isn't huge or significant, it's just the wrong direction. We want to see those going up, not down. But based on year to date revenue collection and the slow start to the year, we're projecting two hundred and thirty-five thousand for adult admissions, leaving adult discount at fifty-five thousand, leaving child admission at a hundred and thirty thousand, child discount, forty-five thousand, punch card sales at forty-five thousand, adult membership at ninety thousand. Donations, we don't estimate an amount there, we'll take them though. Birthday parties, four thousand, lockers, ten thousand, towels, eighty-five hundred, concessions, thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five thousand, sorry, you're right. Sometimes I do that, thanks for catching me.
She does actually see you paying attention.
Towers, two hundred and fifty, Black Hills Golden Jewelry, five hundred. We were trying to sell that all out in a lump sum this year and that didn't work, so there is enough inventory left over for that. I confirmed those numbers with Chris. T-shirts, fifty-five hundred, swimwear, fifteen thousand, five hundred, souvenirs, fifteen hundred. We do sell rocks, but we don't project any amount there. This is miscellaneous, gift shop sales, five thousand. We haven't been charging any advertising fees. Miscellaneous revenue, six hundred. That's our monthly sales tax reporting allowance. When we report our monthly sales tax and remit the payments on time, we get a percentage of refund. Interest earned on our debt service reserve fund, recovery of prior year expenditures is our workers' comp money again, and then our operating transfer in estimate is ninety-eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars for the plunge.
According to that dog and pony show they put on when they try to get saved by, we were not supposed to have paid property taxes ever again after this year.
It is doing well, it's gotten better each year. I, you know, I wasn't for that, but obviously their projections didn't.
Well, and I think you bring up a very good point, and there's a couple of things
that, again, I want the council to be aware of that we're looking at. We had an individual come in from Glenwood Springs, Colorado, that's an expert in spa and water facilities, and we wanted him to look at our operation. He thinks the plunge was operating very, very, very well, but we are at our peak as to our earning power. Said it would not do us any good to add something like additional slides or a surf pool or something like that. The investment would not pay for itself. Every community has a water park type thing, the plunge doesn't have the draw that it used to. His suggestion is a private public partnership, and there's enough of capacity of our spring that through thermodynamics, we could probably support somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty spa pools outdoors, and he would suggest utilizing part of the plunge property to have the bottom floor be a high-end locker room, gift shop area, and upper floors being hotel rooms that would have exclusive access to that, those pools twenty-four hours a day. That has proved a very successful model for him, Glenwood Springs. He feels that that would work here in Hot Springs. There has been some interest in that, but nobody has stepped forward, willing to write a check or come up with a plan. But that's probably, if we wanted to look at increasing the profitability of the plunge, we would, we would have to go to something like that. Obviously, we planned something like that. Plunge Advisory Board would come with a recommendation and the council would, you know, be looking at proving it, probably even maybe end up going for the community to vote on because the community would be involved in that. But that's, you know, that's something that concerned me was we're kind of flatlined on our ability to increase the profitability, so we're trying to look at some way.
So is he suggesting in addition to building onto the facility or totally transferring the way the building is?
Probably building on to the, the public-private partnership. One of the things that I think I'd be very sensitive to is the fact that the community voted to have three hundred and sixty-five day a year availability to our water, and, you know, you can see from those numbers, if the private company, that we're only, you can see why it'd be closed in the wintertime, having to pay lifeguards, operating utilities and so forth. So, you know, we would want to make sure that we had that, that, at least part of that open year round. Now, in Glenwood Springs, some of Steve Beckley's best business comes in the wintertime. People come up, they're willing to soak up, they, they go in that ninety to a hundred degree water and feel very, very comfortable doing that year round, so it would be a year round type increase. With Moccasins Springs getting popularity, we can develop a niche that would drop people from the front range. Steve pointed out that on a busy traffic day, it's faster to get to Hot Springs than it is to Glenwood Springs, Colorado. Steve pointed out that on a busy traffic day, it's faster to get Hot Springs and a district than the Springs, Colorado, from the the front range population centers in Colorado. So that's just something to keep in mind. We're certainly not aggressively pursuing that. But, you know, we've looked at that. There has been some interest of doing that. But we certainly like to see a plan and make sure that both parties would be protected, both the city and a private company would be be protected if we chose to go to that.
I don't think when it brought to a vote, it was to leave it open three hundred and sixty-five days into the year.
Well, I think that was one of the things that I heard.
They wanted it to be open.
Yeah, want it to be open. And, you know, I think that's, that that was one of the big, big thing. One of the other things that Steve did point out also, I know there's a push in our community for a community center. And that was one thing that he experienced in Glenwood Springs, Colorado. And they build a big community center. It costs over a million dollars a year to run it. And the citizens now have, that voted for it, have buyer's remorse. I don't know if you remember him talking about that.
Oh, yeah, I recall, yeah.
So that's just, Misty always likes to point out, you know, what something costs isn't just what you you pay for. They also have to pay to keep it, to maintain and operate. So we're kind of finding that out with plunge, too.
Huh, try to sell them that when they want to buy it.
Yeah, hindsight, right? It's always so much easier. Any questions or comments on the revenue projected for Evans Plunge?
What did you say earlier, that the plunge this last year was just a minus, a minus forty?
Forty-five thousand, I think in twenty eighteen is what we ended up transferring in out of the estimated amount. The reason these numbers don't match exactly is because we also do a water and sewer subsidy at the end of the year, so it includes that. I'm pretty sure it was forty-five thousand that we ended up transferring in for twenty eighteen.
And Chris has also expressed some concern this year. As you all know, maybe you don't, Wind Cave is basically closed and will be closed until probably Labor Day or thereabouts. And so.
Elevator?
That because of the elevator. So there's some concern over numbers this year.
Decreased numbers coming in?
Coming in that might come down. Others have pointed down, well, maybe they'll come here instead of, you know, that would have stopped at Wind Cave. But that's a concern. But on the bright side, she's noticed also they've had a lot more buses in. So that's, and those are big, big paychecks when that happens. So they're trying and they're working hard.
Okay, the last one is our seven oh one fund, our cemetery perpetual care fund. Like someone was asking, we know the amount that we sell the lots for. I don't project any revenue in this fund because we don't project expenses. It's all based on on the cemetery board. And we have, in twenty seventeen, we met finally the required fifty thousand dollar minimum to operate a perpetual care cemetery. So now we do have some funds that can be spent, but it needs to be spent directly and only solely for the care, perpetual care of our cemetery. So they don't have any projection in there. If I did put it in there, it'd be fifty percent of the amount we put in the general fund. And we do record it in there. And again, twenty eighteen, we sold a lot of lots, so.
How how many years did it take us to get to this, that fifty thousand?
I'm not sure when it started. I'm not sure when they started with the perpetual care.
Eighteen seventy.
A long time ago.
Sorry, I noticed that there's no, about fifty thousand we could spend.
Yeah, and we're at about fifty-nine or sixty right now. We spent twelve hundred. I just moved it over today. The second reading of the appropriation ordinance, twenty days past today, so they are spending a little bit on things there. All right, so that wraps up revenue.
You know, the cavalry used to have up there once.
Really? Our cemetery is really.
We've got pictures of them.
So all of these numbers, the final numbers in these funds, we'll revisit these when we talk about expenses. Because it's our job to make sure we match these. And if we couldn't find any more revenue sources in any of these things, then we've gotta, we've gotta work on our expenditures. I'll keep that up. And then for, before we start in our expenditures, I'd just like to go over the mayor recommended changes to the expenses that we've updated in our Excel spreadsheets, but that are not yet updated in your finder printouts. Thank you. We lowered the Prairie Hills Transit subsidy amount from thirty-five to five. We lowered the Shedco requested amount from twenty-five to ten. There can still be discussion on all these things. I'm just going over them in summary. We lowered the senior meals to four thousand. They requested five thousand, but did agree to lower to four thousand if needed. Since we were needing to make cuts, we did that. We lowered contingency five thousand, legal five thousand.
Listen.
Yep.
On lower in the legal, I think we're saying more this year than we expected. Why would we expect to see less extra?
I think, I think a lot of the expenses for this year, looking at the billing, was the amount that they're doing research for corner construction. And hopefully that will be, motions will be made and and we won't have to go into court on that. Obviously, if we go into court, we'll we'll need substantially more than even what we projected, I think. So that was kind of where I thought process.
So that's only.
Uh, so far, yep.
Is that only a lawsuit the city's in right now?
I believe so. It's only one I'm aware of, so.
Um, we have that, um, Citizens for Progress, the Johnson brothers also, but we've won that.
Yeah.
We're on the other side of that one, waiting for the money.
Yeah, we're just trying to click.
Uh, we have lowered the finance office salary, six, six thousand total, salaries five thousand. And that decrease created a subsequent decrease in payroll taxes and retirement. And the thought behind this is Kim was up around twenty-nine dollars an hour. And our position top of scale is somewhere in the twenty-five something. I'm sorry, I don't remember the numbers exactly between. And we typically hired eighty percent top of scale. We figured we could offer up to eighty-six percent and still be fine with this projection. Uh, lower the police.
Is that position out of the finance office?
Yes.
In years past, was that separate?
Um, we only started having one after Harley died and it's always been in the finance office.
Okay, for some reason I was thinking that they had a separate heading for administrator.
Yeah, Harley was administrator slash.
He was under finance, yeah. Uh, lowered police department, two thousand seven hundred and forty in total. We lowered salaries two thousand. If you remember, when I project, um, uh, the personnel budget, we always take the police department and increase it because they get paid for every holiday, um, they get paid night differential, they have overtime amounts. So, um, I'm sorry, wrong place. So with our projection, George talked with Mike and asked if he felt comfortable with a little bit of a decrease to the projected amount. And we changed it from four point, or from five percent to four point five percent and came up with that two thousand dollar difference.
And the reason back that we asked about that in the past, we've always been one officer at least short. And we have been fully staffed. We escaped the last hiring of fault from Fall River Sheriff losing an officer. So I think we're, we're, we've got a stable police force now. We're fully manned and we've got some reserve officers. So we don't anticipate as much overtime. Bill, do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think the last officer, well, no, the second to the last officer we hired was Joe Haoshi, who was not a certified officer. So he was out of the mix while he was at the academy. He's graduated the academy. He's working his shift. We brought him, we brought on Nate Cronin. He was a certified officer from Box Elder. So all our officers are certified, um, and they're, yeah, we're not. And and quite frankly, we've got a police chief that, especially when Joe was at the academy, when things would come up, we also had an officer that, when he had newborn twins and had to take some time off. Mike, our chief, actually worked some midnight shifts to defer, uh, to keep us from eating some overtime. So Mike's willing to, you know, to step up and and take some of that. It keeps him connected with the community, but it, we've got, I think we've got a really good department that, um, that's working together and fully staffed. And and like the mayor said, for things like, um, that went on at Centennial Park, we can pull on our reserve officers. We've got five reserve officers now, so. And with what went on with bum guards, we didn't lose an officer because of of all of that, so we're stable for just twenty seconds.
So the two thousand decrease in the salary amount had a subsequent decrease in payroll taxes and retirement. And then the other cut made to the police department was their clothing budget by five hundred dollars. They still have plenty. They have seven thousand dollars for clothing budget as opposed to seventy-five hundred. And George did ask Mike if he was comfortable with that. He agreed. Uh, the only caveat he had to both of these decreases were that if something unexpected comes up, we're gonna need to address it then. They could have a scuffle or they get blood on a belt or somewhere in a uniform, that they need to dispose of it. So if there's something like that that happens, then we'd address that with contingency or by a supplemental appropriation of the council. Uh, we lowered the highway and streets propane budget by a thousand. We lowered the street cleaning equipment by five hundred. We lowered the airport equipment repair by three thousand. That's some new rear tractor tires. And Ed agreed that he could keep the ones he's got for another year. We lowered the library building repairs by a thousand. We lowered recreation supplies by five hundred. We lowered Evans Plunge Mineral Springs a total of fifty-four hundred, which was five thousand in salaries and then four hundred in payroll taxes. They only have a few employees who have retirement, so we didn't adjust that. And we lowered Southern Hills Golf Course, a total of two thousand seven hundred, which was clothing by five hundred, salaries by two thousand, and payroll taxes by two hundred. So for tonight, we're gonna skip over the general fund expenses and talk about that Thursday, not tomorrow. But since we have some time and we're doing good on time, if you'd like, I'd like to get through some of the other easier funds for expenses. Um, our two-one-one fund, liquor lodging and dining, if you remember, we've projected revenue of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We are projecting expenses of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, so we are projecting to, um, keep some cash of ten thousand in this fund. Any money that's set aside, if you remember when I was reading, um, what it's established for, the fund has traditionally been used to pay eighty percent of the tax collected directly to the Chamber of Commerce. So that's this other current expense amount here. Um, and then the other twenty percent is used to pay for utilities and building repairs at the Mueller Center and the depot. We just haven't had enough cash balance in this fund to pay for the big repairs that are needed at the Mueller Center. So we've had to rely on our general fund balance for the new roof last year. Putting ten thousand in the cash reserve for this fund is a good idea, as you know or don't know yet, because we haven't fully talked. But they have a hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs to do at the Mueller Center. Um, so just because we have a little overage in this fund doesn't mean we should spend it right away. We're anticipating the telephone expenses, the electricity expenses, and then this all goes to the chamber. So this is where we come up with this dollar amount. And like I said, with the estimated revenue and the expenses, we'd be putting a little bit of cash in this fund at the end of the year for reserves. And I think the cash balance in this fund is currently under ten thousand dollars at the end of twenty eighteen, so it's not a lot in there. Uh, I'm gonna skip the additional sales tax fund because we're talking about the easy ones tonight. We'll get that one on the night that we're talking about.
Let me ask, we were showing that we give eight percent to, uh, Chamber.
Yes.
Um, and then maybe got an outfit like Shedco.
Yes.
Asking for money, what should we sell that to, ten thousand dollars so far?
Recommended.
Okay, so my question is this, if we're gonna acknowledge that Shedco is a benefit to the community, it seems to me that Shedco and the Chamber of Commerce, that we could be, are banging heads against each other. Because basically one's doing what the other one's supposed to do. Sir?
I think that's a, that's not really totally true. The Shedco is more, the Chamber used to have all of those functions. They had an economic development committee that would work with G O E D and take all the leads that would would come into Hot Springs. Several years ago, they separated the economic development, I think under Harley, and went to an economic development corporation that does that. So they work the economic development aspect, looking with the governor's office of economic development, all the leads that come in, working to get people like bum guards to come to Hot Springs or grants and so forth, to help with housing studies and so forth. Whereas the Chamber's function is to support the business, ongoing businesses and tourism, of course, being our biggest industry, is one of their biggest communities. And that money goes, a lot of that money goes for advertising, uh, which you need to get people to to come to to Hot Springs. So that that's kind of the difference. And I think the money that's collected in this fund is governed by South Dakota law that, uh, that it can't be used for general expenses in the city.
And obviously, we have restrictions of.
There's restrictions. It has to be used for marketing and promotion events. And so we feel that supporting the Mueller Center where the Chamber lives, also with with our community center is promoting Hot Springs. It is an opportunity to have events here, so we can justify putting that, that money in that promotion. And certainly, the Chamber's mission is to promote the the community.
That amount, the percentage, hasn't changed in a long time.
So thirty thousand dollars for electricity, that's for them and the Mueller Center?
Yes. The depot and the Mueller Center.
The depot's only open in the summer.
Yep, they open in May and they close in September.
That's, that's all three, not just the two, all three.
Right, uh, the Chamber's in the Mueller Center, so when I say the Mueller Center, it includes them.
Three.
She's saying the Chamber, the Mueller Center.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So really, what was the depot used for?
I have to go full-bill.
I was just curious.
I don't know the depot amount from here, but here's the amounts we've stayed in the past. We did identify through an energy audit that the Mueller Center has a poor power factor. They cannot tell us exactly what causes that, but some pump or motor is running inefficiently. And they recommended that we have an electrician come in and identify the source of that. And then maybe we could save some electricity if we can fix that. And that is on Chris's to-do list for the, this next year, is to get somebody down there and see.
I wondered if they'd determine that, in a way.
Black Hills Energy did an energy audit for us last, was it early this year, late last year?
Late last.
When we were talking about solar power, they did it.
So they're gonna have somebody come in this year and try to find out what it is?
This year or next year, if he's looking for electricians to come in.
Actually, and I could be wrong, but remember when we had, yeah, that controls company, they did all the controls and and stuff. They came to us and we wanted us to pay them, I don't know, fifteen hundred dollars or something for them to do a workup for the Mueller Center. This has probably been like seven years ago. And at that time, they did bring up that there was something inefficient there in their workup, but it would have been. But it would have been something that was out of their realm, but they did.
Identify, well, it sounds like from the same, identifying the same thing.
So basically, you're recycling the same problem, which you would have thought if somebody had done something by now.
The hardest part is who that somebody is. We're often defining, like, we all know this, okay? Who is the somebody that's going to?
Well, you would think at least approach the council or something.
And the energy audit came about, one of the things that we did, we were looking at using solar power to supplement several of the city facilities. In fact, we even went so far as getting state law change to allow us to finance that for 20 years, that lease to buy that solar equipment and so forth. And that would have actually saved us money yearly with the initial projections that Genco provided for us. That got Black Hills Energy interested in coming down and wanting to do an energy audit. And they found several facilities, I think the plunge was one, that they could provide a lower rate for us and then ways that we could save, and this is how that came about. So we'll keep pressing. No, go ahead.
So is electricity, is any of that electric heated or is it all out of the river still?
I believe it's still all in the river. And there's been, I think, issues with that too, the efficiency of that.
There was a long time ago.
Yeah, but even, you know, as the so forth builds up, there's...
There's a projection on that day, or is... We had had his, outlived his performance at the time.
But to replace it, we would see a very significant...
You, boy!
That's why a lot of conversation was dropped like half a day.
It was a good idea, I think that's...
And thermal heating systems, the technology has improved tremendously since that was put in, so. But we certainly are going to, we'll look at that power factor thing and see.
No, my thing with the Chamber, I want to do it.
I just don't know, I don't think it would, you know, I don't know what significance that would change. You know, it would be $1,000 or $2,000, but if it's a simple fix and you give only the rate, that'd be great.
My, my thing with the Chamber is, are hands tied, can they get money and put it towards maintenance, building maintenance? It is a building that they are using.
They don't have any extra?
Yeah, their budget is pretty limited. One of the things that they do assist in, you know, we've got one person on staff at the Mueller Center. So when Chris is gone, come up here for a meeting, they answer phones, they handle the front desk, people come in. So it's a good, it's a good working relationship that they help.
It's always been, yeah, always been. I just didn't know if there was any options with that 80%.
Back when we was on the council before, they talked about only having the depot for them in the summer time and not going to... But that was...
That would be, that would be a very, very difficult thing. The depot doesn't have the internet capability, the expenses to get to...
No, I'm just saying...
Yeah, I know, I remember that it had been...
So what actually is the estimate of that 80%? What is that?
And it's based on how much we collect in that 2-1-1 Fund, so it can vary. That's based on our estimated revenue?
I just remember what... That 80%, though, it's not correct, so.
No, it's not.
Wasn't in the past, the last year.
I think we covered that quite a bit.
We went back to $28,000. I can honestly only say that because I felt like, oh, you look here.
This fund is projecting cash reserves, cash being put back into the fund of 10,000. So really, cutting the Chamber at this point might make a little bit of difference in this fund in this year for cash going back into it. But I would encourage you all to listen to the Chamber, what that decrease would, how that would affect them before you make any determination.
Basically, right hand, borrowing from the left. Just as a, just as an open-minded question for argument, if the Chamber went down to 70%, could the City ever 10% of that to Shedco?
That's a decision that the council would have.
I'm just asking if the feasibility of it, if it's whether or not it would be allowed.
That would be considered a question as well. Do we want to highlight anything in here, come back to this, or?
I'm just brewing a...
Okay, well, we can always come back to it Thursday night if we decide.
If the Chamber is already on a very lean budget, could they even afford if we lower them 10%?
I would want them to come in and talk to you about, I don't think that they would be comfortable with that at all, they're tight already, so.
That's not their sole source of revenue?
It's not, they have member fees, but they're not rolling in cash.
It costs a lot of money.
Do we know what else they get, how much? Don't they have to share that with the City?
We asked for it, I'm sure they provide it.
I'd like to know.
Okay, I will get that for you, hopefully before Thursday. I know that they're not super happy with their accountants, but...
Thank you, Misty.
We can't have it by Thursday, hopefully we can have a date when we can have it by, maybe remain. All right, this is the bid fund. We projected revenue of 93,100, we're projecting the same amount in expenses. Professional services, that includes the social media position, one-third of it, which is 10,000, and then any other professional services they may pay. Publishing is where the majority of their money goes. This is a Lawrence and Schiller partnership, they, through the Governor's Office of Economic Development, they get matching...
Governor's Office of Tourism.
Of Tourism, thank you. They get matching funds, so as they contribute as much, they match up to 40,000. So this, these dollars go even farther than just this dollar amount. Another 40,000 is matched through that state...
And that's one function the Chamber has helped out immensely, is directing the bid board to advertise properly. With the motel owners, there's a couple of things, proclamism coupled with being busy in the summer when the ads are due and probably not as much attention is paid to it. And fortunately, we have a very aggressive manager, Olivia, steps in and cracks a whip and makes sure those ads get out and we get that matching money, because that's very, very important to leverage that money.
They have some travel and conference budgeted, they've attended the Rocky Mountain International in the past to represent the entire city of Hot Springs. And then improvement other than buildings, that's dependent on the bid board projects for the year. They've helped out with some solar lighting on our welcome signs, they've helped out the youth football league before. So a bid board will meet, discuss, and approve any improvements.
So they basically pick the projects?
Yep, and want to help out the overall community, essentially.
And I think it's really important for us to recognize and realize we were in competition for visitors. Tourism is a very, very important industry here at Hot Springs. We're competing with Custer. I don't know what the current figure is, but before, and I can't remember the exact number, but they had substantially more motel rooms than we do. Hill City has substantially more motel rooms than we do. That bid board money that they get and the bid board boost tax that they get from the tourists are a lot more than we get because of the fact that they're closer to Mount Rushmore, Custer State Park. And so when you're looking at Keystone, Hill City, and our competition, they outspend us tremendously. And I realize that because I was on the Board of Black Hills Bad Lines and Lake, served as the president one year, and you see the amount of money that Custer's able to advertise, Hill City's able to advertise, and Keystone's able to advertise compared to Hot Springs. So it's really important to keep that internet presence, that those ads going out in the travel guide, South Dakota Travel Guide and so forth. And so it's, the bid board serves a very, very important function. And that's something that I certainly am going to watch this year a lot closer is that they're getting their ads in on time and again, keeping their properties looking halfway decent so that those travelers that are in doubt will stop and stay in Hot Springs as opposed to driving on.
Capital improvements, the 501 Fund, we don't have anything budgeted. We will, if the baseball, T-ball folks decide they have a project, we will present it to you at a council meeting and you will approve that, and then we'll do a future supplemental appropriation to pay for it. We just don't know yet enough to budget for it.
Baseball, T-ball, is that just the youth or is that teenagers and fleet?
It is just baseball and T-ball.
In recreation?
Yep. The first year, the expense in 2018, the first year we had this established and they could use some of that money, they spent all of it on field improvements.
Didn't they put lights up up there or something?
That was before this fund. All right, so we can hit water, wastewater, solid waste, and then we'll see where we're at. And these are expenses, if you remember, we projected revenue in these funds. In water, we had projected revenue of 863,050. And we have expenses projected of 754,600. We'll go through each of those. That's projecting a profit in the water fund of 108,000. This may look like a lot of money, but anybody who's been around for a little while knows that if anything goes wrong with water or sewer... Yeah, that's not very much at all. Those funds also are rebuilding up a cash reserve balance that they had because we are now anticipating some very large infrastructure improvement projects in 2021. So every little dollar bit that we can put back in there is gonna be rainy day money for what happens after we spend all the extra cash reserves we have if something does go wrong.
And that's why we're very adamant about getting that, those rates passed so that we qualify for grants or low-interest loans so that when that water project does come, we may be able to save some of that money that we put away and have it built.
And the water department?
Water Department pays for one, or 40% of Tracy's wage. It pays for 100% of Sean, Gordon, Tad, half of Pete, and then Barb. They're all paid out of the water fund. Salaries and wages are 225,100. Payroll taxes, 18, retirement, 14, work miss compensation, 4200. I go over these pretty fast because there's really not a lot you can do to change what these numbers are. Group insurance, that's our Wellmark, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Dearborn National Life, and Delta Dental, and 40% of Tracy's, so 43,100. Unemployment insurance, 850, this would be...
And Misty, now that you're talking about those, we also had our study done, compensation study. You will be seeing that as a council within a month or so. Can you give us an insight as to preliminarily what they're saying, are we paying, are people fairly?
Yeah, it's taken a little bit longer than I expected because they're used to working with corporations and we're so different, municipalities are so different. So it's taken a lot of back and forth to get them, one, to understand our fund structure, and then, two, our compensation structure, which is a little bit different. We have a five-year step increase process that we've used since, I think, 2010 or '09, where we start people typically at 80% of a top of scale and move them through five years, expecting them to be 100% at the end of five years. And then we do a longevity increase each year after that, in addition to our COLA increases. And so once we've got a understanding of the differences in the way we handle things, the last review I had with her in preparation for our admin finance review of her findings, they're going to recommend a different compensation structure, but are also giving us some advice on the way we currently have it. Because it was very clear with her, we weren't asking her to tell us how to do it differently, we were just asking her to tell us if we're paying our employees fairly. And she only found two positions within the city that are under the 25% structure that she set up for us. And there's a lot more that goes to it, and I'll let her explain that when she gets a chance. But we are fairly paying the majority of our employees for the jobs that they're doing. And we move people faster through the scale than regular businesses do, and she is going to be recommending caps. Because in the compensation structure, they recommend you will move through a scale in 10 years and once you reach your cap, you don't get anymore. And we don't do that, and we weren't looking for somebody to come in and substantially change the way we pay our employees because that would create upheaval, and that's not what we were looking for. But the answer to the question, I believe, is going to be yes, we are paying our employees fairly.
And I think that was one of the reasons that previous council elected to do this. We want to make sure we've got some very good employees, we want to make sure we don't lose them and that we are paying them fairly, and I think that's varying out, so.
Well, there is a level, you start at certain check, you get to everything after that, just raises or cost of living.
Yep, and one of the things that she found in reviewing our pay structure, that's very common in other businesses, is where we could pay in the 50% scale range and we are closer to the 25, typically benefits that are offered are not near as high as what we have. So she's gonna help us with total compensation statements for our employees so that they understand what the cost of their job is to the city other than just their hourly rate. Just our health insurance alone, which the city pays 100% of the employee premium, adds about $5 an hour to your wage. So we, where we may be a little bit lower on the scale for actual wages, our benefits are much higher on the scale than some of those others. And these percentages she calculated, we'll explain to you, but we have excellent benefits and we pay fair wage.
For me getting behind the wage compensation study, it came about when I had a particular department that was struggling hiring employees. It felt like it was the wage that kept that from happening. They weren't able to compete with other locales that were actually hiring staff. So the question was, well, what do you think they should be paid? And the answer was, well, if we're gonna compete, we need to match that community or that employer, that's where we need to have our wages. So rather than just ping ponging all over the place, well, if we're gonna compete with Custer, we're gonna compete, we need to match their wages. We wanted to see what a fair wage was for the responsibilities that were asked by that position and especially the benefits that Misty's talking about. We all know this day and age, health benefits are a big thing. So if that's covered for you, you know, by the...
That was the right approach because back in the day, we would hire untrained personnel and supervise. We trained them up to the point where they were told to serve by what we would use them on the next route because we're not competing with communities and cities of our size. And if you compete head to head with them, we'll lose a lot of good employees. So I think this exists. The only thing I guess, I wonder, is if you hire new personnel in the water department and he meets 75% of his water certifications and stuff like this, do you start him at 75% of...
The wage is set at 80% of a base wage, but water and wastewater are different than our other, and this was part of the learning curve we had with our compensation study people, is each certification they get, they have the ability to get a dollar an hour raise. So it's up to them, and we will pay you to certify one position higher than is required to run our system. to run our system. So they might have a lower beginning wage, but as they get those certifications, they have an ability to increase their wage based on those that nobody else within the city does.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, is all entry level positions, whether they were class three certified or class one certified. Do they all start at the same?
Nope. They get dollars for each certification.
Oh, that they have coming in?
Yep.
See, last time I was on Water and Sewer Boys, they figured they have now, and the water department started taking the sewer department?
Yep.
And vice versa, so they classified both departments and they really shot up their wage.
Yeah, here's our wages that we pay for. And this is only, looks low because it's half, because he split 50/50. And Tracy, same thing, he's split, he obviously makes much more than that, but here's the wages we're paying most employees.
And for me, the other part of that study was not to get to a point where employee A or whatever is making $20 an hour, but the study says they should be making 23. So we immediately bumped them up because that's what the compensation study says. And vice versa, employee B is making $20 an hour, but the study says they should only be making 17. The intent isn't to move people around, but to have an understanding of what fair compensation for that position is. So that maybe position, or employee B gets held until, as far as their pay raises, look up to the $20 an hour that they deserve to make, and the other employee maybe gets held at that wage until they get caught up. So it's not to benefit or to penalize an employee, but just for us to have an independent assessment of what we should be paying for these job qualifications rather than picking a number out of the air, trying to compete with other communities when we can't afford to do that.
And there too, if you stop thinking about the benefit package dollar goes farther than hourly wage.
That's why that total compensation statement was a big part of what we asked for with this too.
If you, anyone, the employees try to go on their own and get matched the insurance and everything, we have a good, one-third of their salary is going to be compensated. So that is one of the things that, I mean, because if you're going to figure in paying for your own retirement, your own insurance benefits, and the same exact package as you're getting from the city, it's going to be outrageous.
And you're finding, and you're finding most employees now are looking for benefits more than wages.
Because the cost of benefits are so high.
They did a study on that. Anywhere up to, up to the age of about 38 years old, they're looking at an hourly rate. After 38 to 40 years old, they're looking at a better.
And cost of living. What does the cost of living in Hot Springs versus what does the cost of living in Denver?
Why are there?
Maybe it is, but just to compare to it.
What is our workers' comp rating?
Point 072 is what we pay. We have a really good rating.
Yeah.
And it's fully funded, so we don't pay when someone has a claim. We have a reserve built to pay claims. So we pay that percentage. Because we've been, well, you weren't on the council, it wasn't very many months ago that we had somebody from workers' compensation come and give us an award for 25 years of being members of the S D M L workers' compensation.
Yeah, because that connection really-
Yeah, if we did, we talked, when I first started, about switching to the type where you just pay the claims, but there could be years where your costs are significantly higher than you budgeted for and you wouldn't know, and so we decided to stick with the-
I was looking at that book we give every month, and some of the jobs opening throughout the state, there's some cities paying insurance for the full family.
Oh.
That's going to cost $1.
Yeah, our insurance for a full family per month is over $2,300.
The city used to pay half of a family.
There are only three employees left on that. They were grandfathered and they still have it. Insurance, 421, that would be like our building, property and liability insurances. Professional services for water include merchant processing fees, qualified pre-sort, the meter reader, one call, that's the dig, the various testing they have, and tank cleaning. I didn't get that last word in there. So their professional services are estimated at 35 again. Publishing, they don't publish much, but they do need to publish their annual drinking water report. If they had any other reports that they had to publish, be included in that. Vehicle repairs, gone down to 2,500. Building repairs, 300. And this is for their buildings that store the pump houses because they don't really have a office building. Equipment repairs, that would be pumps and miscellaneous equipment repair, and man, those pumps are expensive. $6,000 doesn't go very far. Street walk repairs, 500. Sewer water repairs, 3,800, 38,000, sorry.
Now, is that street, is that street repair, is that enough money? If they have to turf the streets, it could cost more than $500.
Nope, you're right. This would be for minor repairs. So if there was a big project, which they can't anticipate, what projects might happen as far as breaks go, they, because they are their own fund and they have their own cash, they will do a supplemental appropriation if needed to cover those kind of things.
So you just put 500 in there to make it look good?
That's what Tracy asked for in there. But as you can see, it's been all over the place, so.
Yeah. Yeah. $57,000.
Sewer water repairs, 38,000. Again, that's just estimating what they might need through the year. There's no way to tell what might happen. 400 for supplies, very minimal supplies, marking, paint. 1,200 in clothing, that's an increase. We talked about increasing the boot allowance. Water and sewer are required to wear safety shoes when they're in trenches. And we have historically, for the last, as long as I know, given $100 for a boot allowance to these employees that are required to have safety footwear. Every single receipt that comes in is for significantly more than $100. You cannot buy a good pair of safety shoes for $100.
You can't buy a bad pair for-
No, you can't buy a bad pair for $100 either. So we're requesting to increase that boot allowance, and then the other clothing they get is very minimal.
Is 200 enough to cover them?
It's close. It's a lot closer than 100. They're happy with the projection for an increase. And they pick up the difference because they own the shoes and they wear them and they don't have to return them if they leave. But it, you know, one pair of boots for a year, $200, it's not getting them too far. It's not extravagant. Janitorial supplies at 300. Minor tools at 5,000. Uh, saws, valve keys, blades, I think is what that's supposed to say, batteries, et cetera. Purification chemicals, we are lucky, we can minimally treat our water. 12,000 is what we have estimated, and they've spent similar amounts. The decrease from the years before is not having to, is it chlorine?
Chlorine.
That we stopped having to purify our water with chlorine, that decreased expense. Gas, oil, and diesel, hard to project, we have 7,000. Travel and conference, 1,000. That'd be any of those certifications like Craig and Ray were talking about. Telephone, they, in the future, they may add a monitoring system and may need to add a phone line, but they're not ready to do that yet. That's what the note says, we don't have anything in there for now. Electricity for the year, cost a lot to keep those pumps running. Cell phones, 1,300. We did negotiate a better cellphone rate with Verizon, so you'll see that number be lower in a lot of departments as we go through.
Does every employee have a cellphone?
Nope, not every employee, but everyone in the water and wastewater departments do.
Well, that's what I meant.
Yeah. They don't, only Tracy has a smartphone, all the other phones are basic phones. Machinery.
Has anybody ever actually kind of figured out the numbers? It's hard for me to believe that cell phones are cheaper than a radio system.
Uh, your radio rules just changed again, and so you have to, even if you have microphones that operate on radio waves, they just changed the laws again where they sold those so people can charge you whatever they want to operate on them. So that's constantly changing. Our cellphone rates, I think it's like $14 a month or $15 a month for the basic phone?
We just had to buy new handheld radios for the police because ours turned to crap. We bought 10 radios for 50.
I have so many numbers that go through my head, so I'd have to look it up, but they're expensive.
Cell phones were cheap.
Yeah.
And plus, you don't have the licensing and limitations.
You can't call anyone.
And, and of course with the police, there's a lot of information that you don't want going over there.
They're a specified radio system.
So are you talking about portable radios or vehicles with cars?
Portable, and portables.
Those are a little bit different.
You're talking about like-
The company that my family has, we run a Motorola system and we've been using the same system right now for what's going on, 12 years.
Do people tell you that you're in violation of FCC, the new FCC rules because of the radio frequency that you're using? Has that, this happens every year where somebody comes in and says you have to get all new stuff because of the law that passed and you can't use this radio frequency anymore because it's now owned by-
The military absorbs some of the radio frequencies and they're the ones that actually dictate whether or not vehicles are going to be checked.
So, because we've had told that every year, for the few that do use radios. But the other thing about the cell phones is they contact anybody. Mike Close uses his to take pictures, so do Tracy.
Oh, I just wondered, when I asked in the past, no one ever really do.
It used to be in the past, I noticed one of our employees was calling California a lot with his cell phones. When the finance officer at the time, Cheryl, noticed that, went to the mayor, got in a lot of trouble.
We have unlimited calls and texts, so we don't even have to worry about that. Machinery, equipment, we have 35,000. They are requesting a one-ton or three-quarter ton pickup. They need to add to the fleet if a new position is added. That was the theme this year. You saw in the notes that I wrote to you, everybody's asking for a new person, but we're not adding any to the budget, so. But they are looking for a new pickup and-
Didn't they just get a new one?
They did, get a new pickup last year.
They allowed it to get a hand-me-down for the airport.
Yeah, we move them around when we can.
I know that.
General.
Do they really need a new one? Can't they go to-
They, they might be able to, and it would just put more cash in their fund.
Yeah.
They're not operating in a shortage, it's definitely something we can talk about taking out and put more cash in their fund, but if we took it out of there, we might want to put a little bit more in vehicle repairs.
Surplus has some pretty good vehicles sometimes.
Yep, and we buy the, we're just budgeting now, we're not approving a certain purchase, and the last time they bought them, they got them from the state bid.
But isn't this where we change our mind if we want to have money to it or take it away?
Yep.
Okay.
But just approving this at this point is not approving any specific purchase. And we would expect them to do their due diligence and shop around and we would get those and we would approve the purchase or not approve the purchase.
Misty?
Yes.
It looks like we need to keep this one in mind. You said, and it says, they want a new pickup if they get a new position. Now, if they will get a new position, they want a new pickup.
If they still want a new pickup, they would add to the fleet if a new person was hired, they would surplus one of their existing if someone wasn't.
So they still want a new vehicle?
Am I representing that right? George, you were here when you talked about that.
Yes.
If, if somebody is approved, they would add to their fleet, if not, they would probably surplus the vehicle.
See, I don't think they do.
How many do they have?
I can show you a list.
I think everyone, every employee has a pickup.
Remember that was an issue a while back, just can't at least two employees ride in one truck?
Definitely not.
Anyway, that was long ago.
Here are the current vehicles in the water department. They have a 2003 Ford F-250 four-wheel drive, or four-by-four, 2009 Chevy Silverado, 1993 dump truck, and a 2018 Chevy Silverado. You saw how many employees there were in the water department. This is how many vehicles they have.
How many do they have? I never counted, I guess.
That's one, two, three pickups.
No, how many employees?
Oh, we had, what did we have? Four. Sean, Gordon, Tad, and Pete, not counting Tracy. And then if you wanted to see solid waste, I don't think they ask for anymore, but they have that pickup. This is a larger truck.
F-250 is a dual weight.
Yeah, so they have three also.
And how many employees are there? Two?
Three.
You're letting me use a sledge锯.
I'll leave that highlighted. Any other comments about whether or not we take that out? Leave it on. Taking it out at this point would just increase the cash, the projected profit, which is fine. We've talked about the need to rebuild the cash reserves in that fund.
What has been the expense on the repairs for that department?
Good question.
But then it's just the vehicles.
Well, vehicle repairs are all over the place. 3,000, 1,000, 6,000, 2,000, almost 2,000, 5,700, 3,000 budgeted for this year, and I think you have year-to-date amounts on your reports. I don't think they've spent very much year-to-date.
Although they left that or flipped it up, though, it's not going to change the general.
No.
It's just going to change, it's just changing the pandemic.
Yep.
But they'll put that money back in the-
Their reserves.
Where they can put it aside for the water main of Main Street.
Yeah. How about, I asked for, one of the things I asked for before Thursday is for them to give a good explanation of what they need to do.
There's a reason that they want it, and that would be important.
Well, he shared that at our meeting, and that's what he said, if they'd like to add to the fleet or just add to the old.
You know, and I, I do feel a little bit, and I'll just be blunt and honest, I do feel a little bit uncomfortable without, again, asking them, because they're the people that actually do the work. We sit here and, you know, oversight, and I think it's a good question to ask and we'll certainly find the answer, but I also want to keep away from micromanaging the departments that are doing a good job of keeping our water and sewer.
I have no issue with it. I mean, some of those bills could be the same vehicle over and over again, and that could be why they're budgeting us.
I don't think whether we let them have a pickup or not let them have a pickup is micromanaging. I'd like to know the mileage of the three vehicles they have.
Okay, and maybe a justification of the need.
You look at the ages of all their vehicles.
2018 was the newest.
They're, they're just too old. Air band-aiding everything just to keep them on it. At some point, you're going to have to-
Well, at that point.
Okay, so I'm going to leave it, and I will ask before our Thursday meeting for them to explain or justify the need, and I'll get the mileage of the vehicles they're currently driving, and if there's any significant issues with any of the vehicles currently in their fleet.
Thank you, Misty.
Yep.
I'd like to hear from Misty, Misty, okay?
Misty? Okay, so I'll ask Sean and Misty.
Whatever, whatever one they're looking to, they would look to surplus.
Okay.
See what his feeling is on.
Okay, I'll ask Sean and Misty.
If they're looking to surplus it, maybe it's a better vehicle and a van that they're looking to give to-
Scott?
To Scott.
Usually if the vehicle is halfway decent like the one that Ed got, I mean, they'll, they'll pass it on down to the general fund because there certainly isn't enough money in the general fund to buy a vehicle.
Look at this way, if it's good enough for someone else, it shouldn't be good enough for them to get the vehicle.
Well, there's usually one, it's a whole, it's a fleet management, and we do operate on a fleet management system where all the city vehicles can be transferred from one department to another so that everybody has usable, usable equipment.
So the next two expenses in the water fund are related to an SRF loan and the 2011 Albany Water Main replacement, and Detroit, this was all included in the same project, Detroit Avenue Water Main and the Sixth Street Water Main. So the dollar amounts for these loan payments for principal, it's 74,300, and for interest, it's 34,900.
Were those people assessed for that?
No.
Just if they wanted hooked up the sewer?
These were main replacements, so, yeah.
But I know, I know they could, some of the people could have them run it out to the property line and they'd have tapping fees and stuff.
There's no assessment for those. Transfer out? Transfer out eventually, so we don't budget for depreciation or pension expense because it doesn't affect cash, but we do have to post it. And the transfers out only includes the amount transferred to the 101 fund, although the city, oh, two thousand seventeen approved the, we, we were, our auditors told us we had to book the cost of water and sewer to all the places that used it. We had never done that in the past. In order to be compliant with governmental accounting standards, we book it, but we transfer a subsidy to offset that cost. So the net effect is zero to all the funds. So that's considered a transfer out from water and sewer at the end of the year. After the usage has accumulated, we figure those amounts and we do those transfers. We don't budget for them at the beginning of the year. So that's why these amounts are different than the amounts that you know that you're allowing as a transfer into the general fund because at the end of the year, we do actually post them and includes those city use of those utility forgiveness. Total expenses for the water department, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred, the way it sits. And we'll get some information on that additional expense if there aren't any questions on any others.
At thirty-five thousand, are they planning on a new one? I think they need to be able to buy a new truck for thirty-five thousand.
I didn't press the trucks, that's the amount he figured for a one-ton or a three-quarter ton. We bought, we bought...
He's a good shopper.
Yeah, we bought their two thousand eighteen pickups for twenty thousand, the Silverados.
Pretty reasonable.
Waste water fund, six oh four. I used to joke that this was the fund that made the money, but it's also the one that spends the money. So we have identified in the last couple of years some real serious issues with some of the facilities and so we've had to replace the roof. We're looking, we've replaced the cover for our wet well and now we're looking at some emergency repairs to our wet well. We spent about eight hundred thousand on a new sledge press in two thousand seventeen and it finished at sixteen and finished up in seventeen. So they had some significant expenses. Salaries and wages projected for twenty-twenty is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Payroll taxes, we calculate those off this amount, eleven eight twenty-five. Retirement, ninety-three hundred. Workman's comp, thirty-two hundred. Group insurance, thirty-two thousand six hundred. Unemployment, six hundred. This would be our SCPAA, property and liability insurance, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty. Professional services, standard testing and engineering services, we have twenty-five thousand. One thousand for rental, no, got a question?
City don't own any generators? Why would they have to rent a generator for the less station?
They may need to generate...
And the, that there's a substantial power outage, we need that.
I know the water department has a generator.
Pardon?
I know the water department, the street department does.
They'd have to use theirs to run their...
No, they don't. We, we have got, and I should have mentioned that too with the, in the water department. One of the things that we're looking at because of the disaster declaration for South Dakota, there's some FEMA money that should be coming available. And we've got the Black Hills Council, local governments preparing a grant opportunity for us to provide backup generators both to both water pump stations and to the wastewater, also to the library and to the Mueller Center.
And, and we'll be putting it at the airport.
And the airport also. That money, I think those are a hundred percent grants as I understand and...
Wrong note looks, I'm not sure, but...
But anyhow, I feel very uncomfortable. Water not, you know, there's, we've got three million gallons if that tank is full and, you know, how long can we go with that? But I, you know, if you have a, a large fire, a large blizzard, I think it's important that we have that backup capability.
A large rural water usage.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious because I know they have Gen Andrews now.
Yeah, I think the, the capability just aren't enough to handle, is my understanding.
That might be.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question.
No, I just wanted, but I, you sparked that and I wanted the council to know that that's what we're looking at, so.
That's cool.
And of course the library, because that's our backup disaster control center and they have the FEMA camp usually is up at Butler Park and Mueller Center is where people gather in evacuation. And if there is a large power outage, then it would be incumbent on us to have power there to be able to support those.
Just something to think about. A lot of times this stuff is offered so rural communities can kind of keep the pace with emergency equipment and stuff like this. Now, when we let some of these things go by, then we fall out of favor for optional grants. And we, you know, just like the water, you know, we're trying to catch up where we should be, which we shut it down a long time ago as far as water goes. You know, sometimes it looks as an expense to us at the short term, but in the long term, if you're not kept in compliance with what the state and federal government, you know, entities are asking of you, you fall out of favor as far as applying for any grants in the future. So that is something you can consider.
If I understood what I heard, our last meeting with the county on the pre-disaster mitigation plan is, one of the things that's hurt us in the past is we weren't asking for enough. And when we start looking at all the potential places we might need emergency power, it's just, oh, this is good. This may, you may now have passed the threshold where we could get some help and so... And we, we really started thinking through the, you know, hot drug pumping station, the Evans pumping station. You know, if, if power goes down at the wastewater treatment station, the environmental damage potential there is, could be significant. And then there's our ability to function during an emergency at the other locations. So hopefully with this potential FEMA money, we'll, we'll be where we need to be.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is this scenario you just gave out, if we did not try to compare ourselves to that, the liability later on down the road, when everything is settled and everything is done, whose fault was it and why? Those mistakes were...
Why didn't you raise your hand and ask for help?
So, so that's why, you know, and some of this stuff, I know we get a little picky and, and, you know, well, you know, without that. Well, sometimes you can actually pour judgment yourself out of the ability of other services later on down the road. And we've, in the past, have experienced that and I really would have to say, now we really need to pay attention to some of that stuff.
Well, then instead of renting something, don't you think they should own one themselves?
Yeah, and this is, they have not used that. They budget it in case, so that's why the word "may" is there. And we are planning to try to seek out grant funding to purchase it.
Well, the only reason I'm saying if it's an emergency, by the time they find the generator, they might not be able to find a generator.
We don't want to take it out of the budget.
And that's why we're looking, exactly right.
It's the cost to buy one to purchase it.
All depends on what size it...
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's all dependent on the, the size and then the capability of where it's in.
Draw off when you're starting a pump is stronger than what the actual output could be.
That's what they want to run.
Are you looking at ten times that?
We did get an estimate for Gen Pro at one time and I was saying like fifteen or eighteen, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, and I can't, I don't remember those, those estimates right off the... But, you know, it's interesting, two squirrels kind of brought this a couple, a couple, three weeks ago, brought this to fruition when, you know, the power went out in a good part, part of our town. Some of it was restored in less than a half hour, but some of it was out for a couple of hours. And one of the things that nationally, if you have a large situation that takes out a lot of our capacitors, we don't have the capability in the country to, to produce transformers. And so if we've got a whole bunch of those that go out, your power is going to be down for a while. And I guess if I were a terrorist, that would probably be one of the first places I would attack is those...
Something happens, you know.
We never heard you say that.
No, I was kidding. But that's, yeah, so.
You're a moron.
Did I turn it by? I did.
But, I mean, so that's, that's one of the reasons why we're putting a lot of emphasis on that. Good questions and good discussions.
Application at this time due to past floods, the, you know, the very latest floods. Your, your grant request could be easily accepted.
Yeah.
As opposed to...
To give you an example, after reservations, without power, the sludge flood, that they had to... And they were without services for days and they were riding in horseback bringing supplies and some of the secluded ranches didn't know where the alderies were and everything. And that could happen here and we need to have generators on hand in case these things happen because in the event, or if it ever did happen, it's going to shame on you and I'm going to be pointing fingers at us for not making things happen to prevent something like this from taking place.
And really we are considered your fault too.
We'll just tell them it was your fault. If it was smaller, maybe some American rely on us, give them the help with that.
Yeah, and in the event that, what that flood did was we opened up a railway casino, you know, to, to shelter people and we have generators on stack on every building that we have. And through a drawback to Oglala, when our generator kicks on and the pine ridge and that area is out of power, we are supplying power to Oglala. And the, the size of generators we have, we can supply Oglala, Oryx, and Happy Rapids here.
Can we?
Yeah. Send it a little farther.
No, you have some.
Well, there's that, but then you'd be at my mercy. Back up to the third of the power lines.
You think, yeah. Yeah, we need to be able to water it up with it.
All right, so next for wastewater is vehicle repairs. We have estimated at two thousand. Building repairs, we have estimated at three thousand. We have no sewer line repair and floor repairs. Equipment repairs estimated at four thousand. It's a hard one to estimate, something breaks, we've got to fix it. Sewer water repairs, they're looking to repair their secondary clarifier, twenty-five thousand. Supplies, five hundred. Clothing, again, they would be subject to the two hundred dollar boot reimbursement increase, so we increased it to one thousand fifty. Janitorial supplies, five hundred. Minor tools, fifteen hundred. Stop me if I'm going too fast, anybody have any questions?
Clothing, that's not just boots, it's everything.
Yeah, and we don't, they don't buy a lot of clothing.
I was just going to say with three employees, that's only six hundred.
Right, it's not just boots, includes other clothing. Eight thousand for purification chemicals in two thousand nineteen, we added this. It's for the polymer to treat the sludge that they press. Gas oil and diesel, twenty-two hundred. Travel and conference, five hundred. Telephone, fourteen hundred. Electricity, twenty-two thousand. Propane, fifteen thousand. I had that estimated a little higher and after I visited with Cole at that meeting we had with all the departments, we lowered it just a little bit because they're no longer having to heat the sludge to a certain temperature and they're no longer processing something else.
Yeah.
Something else to a heated temperature, so he thought they'd use less propane. Cell phones, a thousand. They also has, they also have an SRF loan. Principal and interest payments are calculated there. Transfer out is staying a hundred and five thousand with the expectation that in twenty-twenty-one it'd be increased to a hundred and twenty-five, similar to water. Five hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars with the projected profit in the fund of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
And I just want to thank Bob and the Public Works Committee, the last year, year and a half, have really put an emphasis on making some physical plant improvements that needed to be done down there and some fixes that had kind of allowed that wastewater treatment plant to, to, to need them and putting an emphasis on it, getting those things done. Bob, we really appreciate that.
The wet well repair, you talked about that, that's still planned for two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, and we just got a response from our attorney about the emergency procurement.
Yeah, it looks like it is an emergency for him. So we'll, we'll be getting, getting that set up and asking the council for some, some substantial funds to get that, that fixed.
All right, I think after solid waste, we could wrap up for tonight and this one should be pretty easy because then after that, we get like the two-on-two fund, the 101 fund, and then golf course and ice plunge. Those require some more detailed discussion and maybe some manipulation of some figures. So I'd like to wait to do those till Thursday if everybody's okay with that. Or we can jump into it tonight, either way. Solid waste fund, we talked about the revenue in this fund. We projected two hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenue. At this time, with the expenses we'll go through, we're projecting a profit of eighty-eight hundred dollars in this fund. We do still not really have a good management plan for our green waste pile and we spent seventy-seven thousand dollars this year to process a pile that had accumulated over a few years. So as you look at that projected profit of eighty-eight hundred dollars, know that that doesn't go very far when we have to chip those and we are still working on some kind of plan to not let that get so far next time. So professional service, I'm sorry?
We need to burn it.
Professional services in our solid waste fund, a hundred and eighty thousand, that's to pay for our trash service. Repairs and maintenance to our totes, supplies and materials for our totes. And we have been requested to purchase new totes. We estimated a cost at seventy dollars each based on the purchase in twenty sixteen and added a little extra. So eight thousand dollars, I have that highlighted because Billy was checking on some prices, but he thought eight thousand should cover what we'd need for some new totes. And then the transfer out, we added in twenty-twenty to go to the general fund.
Totes are garbage cans?
Yes, residential garbage cans.
I don't know how many we have. And I ask only because it looks like they're hoping to buy a hundred and fourteen of them.
Yeah, we have a good supply on hand, either replacing the ones that have been damaged. I did identify when I was trying to help him come up with that price, that the ones we bought in twenty sixteen had an eight-year warranty, so they're going to be checking with Toter on the warranty of some of those, but it was not to replace the entire amount of cans and they are no longer inventoried.
Does that make walks out of garbage truck empty those? They're pretty damn rough, excuse the language. They're pretty darn rough on those things.
Saw, saw one with a lid cockeyed today when I was driving back from lunch too, so, yeah, I agree. The other thing on that, and I just haven't had a chance to follow through, but the green waste piles, there's still an opportunity perhaps of getting some, some, some money for, for those or at least getting them hauled out. We're looking either at the feedlot, there was a company in Colorado that, making biochar that might be interested. And then there was a company that was looking at designing a biofuel system here in Hot Springs that might be able to design theirs to fit what we produce as far as, as waste. But again, without a city administrator to follow through, I'm having a, just haven't had a chance to follow up on those things.
The problem with what they did this time, they didn't chip it, they shredded it.
Yeah.
It's off the course.
Yes, it is.
So there isn't really much you can do with it, this stuff.
Yeah, well, they can, they can, you know, difference, you know, for example, biochar systems, some of them actually use logs. One of the companies from my... One of the companies from Wyoming that called, could use this log, so they can design their furnaces or whatever to, to, to burn. And that same way with a biofuel system. We've checked with the state home, unfortunately, the state home was designed to take pine ways to add a certain level, so we can't, you know, provide them with that.
Well, what I'm getting at is the stuff we did, nobody can use this stuff, I see some people go out and get chips and use them.
Oh, yeah, individual, individuals would be hard time to use a small chip.
We just got a bunch of big pots of stuff that nobody can use. So we need to find a place to hide them or do something.
The city crew has been.
Yeah, I know that.
I, I guess my, my request of the current council will be this whole public works responsible and ourselves responsible for making a decision prior to January 1, what we're gonna do with this year's accumulation.
I agree.
Public works has been talking about it, saying we have to decide. It, it has to be a yearly, whatever it's gonna be, whether it's burning, whether it's chipping, whether it's, whatever. We can't let those piles grow like we let them grow in the past.
Yeah.
And we let them grow because we're hoping that, you know, biochar would work. We had reasons for it, but we can't do that anymore. We have to have a decision at the end of each year, what we're gonna do with what's accumulated and they go now.
What I think is you need, if you do end up burning it, you need to do it in the winter time, so you need to have a decision before winter time's over. I'm just saying if you do burn.
And I, I really think we should approach that idea.
I do too.
Make it more seriously. I know we can offend some people and I know we got a hospital down, maybe down there. But you know, I, I, all I see in the future is that pile growing and growing and growing.
Like the pile we had there, it would have really, I mean, it would have.
Lit up and down.
Well, that pile was way too big to burn.
Yeah, it was way.
They, they, they need to do something with that years ago.
This, this stuff is there right now. If you started one of those piles on fire, you'd have a smush pot that covered this county.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't wanna do it now.
No, that's not a flammable at any time, 'cause it's about 40% dirt.
If we process it and clarified it for mulch, the problem is right now, everybody that had bugs, termites, whatever was in that pile and they nested there in a very nice warm nest and now we processed it to what it is now. I would not recommend anybody taking it to their homes, 'cause all you're gonna be doing is spreading the same problem all over town unless it gets clarified. And if we wanted to make a program to use it, we can, we can kind of take a look at what we spend on the parks and all that kind of stuff for landscaping, dirt improvement, planters, whatever. If you clarified it as you went along, processed it, clarified it and ran it through a season, dried it out, then you would have a viable mulch that could be actually used at the park or, but you gotta calculate the steps that you're gonna do it at as opposed to what you may have been buying and transportation and the whole nine yards. Now, the pile that you have out there, you can process that to clarify it from any bugs, bacteria and stuff like that, but you gotta know, you gotta have it tested to see which you would.
We could surplus it and offer it for sale at our surplus option too. You never know the value of something until you offer it for sale.
Well, and the thing is, we never have.
That makes you some money, it wouldn't sell.
Who else would be able to use it?
True. I don't know, true, you're.
Is it available right now, available to the public at the moment?
It is.
I mean, I mean.
Such as it is.
We have chip piles.
There's chip, there's a lot of chip out there in the public too.
And they like it.
I don't know if anybody'd take that shredded stuff, who would?
I use a lot of those chips.
Feedlots, big fire.
They can stir it up.
I would say.
Just glad you come out here and pick that stuff.
When you already have the screens, you have the equipment necessary, it's only owned by the city.
The point is, we'll be trying to work on, hopefully, and if anybody hears, if anybody liked feedlots or whatever, we certainly got some available, we might even, you know, the two-for-one sale.
Most feedlots just use sawdust.
Yeah.
That way they can feed, put in with feed for the cattle.
Yeah.
And then you do that. You just know it, did you?
No. Learned something new every day.
I don't need to.
Well, I have a question for everybody. Has anybody up till this point seen anything that we can adjust that, like, a decent impact on our?
We haven't really touched the general fund.
I know, but I mean, there's some things that we could bring up. I mean, is there anything, anybody?
Any important projects that we're not funding? Of course, there's a million of those, forget I asked.
Yeah.
Sorry, take that back.
Do you feel like if we stop now, there's questions that we have that you have to go ask people, you don't have time to do that, or?
Yeah, 'cause we can always, yeah, we can always schedule another meeting if needed. We're gonna have enough to talk about next Thursday.
Sit through what we have.
Yep, and if we have to schedule, and we're going to get some questions answered, we schedule.
And I think it's important to understand the process. The first year that we went through it was a top-down process. The city administrator at that time, Nolan.
Actually, no, he met with all the department heads too.
Yeah, but we've had more of a, an interface that department heads gather together and actually go through and have made some adjustments amongst themselves. So it's, it's, it's a good bottom-up process that we are using.
It, it's just as soon as somebody goes, it's easy for department heads to say, oh, Nolan did that, 'cause now it's already happening. Kim will put that there, I don't know why, but ever since I started, even before Nolan, we visited with department heads. In fact, department heads used to come and present their budget requests to the council directly, so it has always been them coming and asking, that's not new.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can remember several, six or seven, nine.
Because we let everybody talk about everything, so we tried that.
Yeah, my first year, I did go to the, yeah, I heard Nolan say, this is, you know, what we're gonna do and, but I, I, I really do appreciate their involvement and I think that's important, that, you know, we listen to them. But also, it's good to have that extra set of eyes and I appreciate all the questions that everyone has asked because, you know, if we can't, can't explain why we're doing something, then we maybe better, better take another look at it and see what.
What did you say earlier, did you cut yet on general?
About 55,000. Here, I'll just go and give you the exact number right now.
And you haven't discussed really anything yet that was gonna affect the general?
No, we haven't touched it. We're at 58,495. Expenses over.
And that's not including donated money?
Uh, that does include the money, last year, we added economic development to the general fund and we added transportation to the general fund. So that includes the senior center and the Meals on Wheels.
Prairie Hills.
Prairie Hills and Shaco. It's the general fund.
Yeah, and those are the kind of things that, you know, we as a council have to determine. Is it the city's responsibility to support public transportation to, and if so, to what level? Is it our responsibility to support economic development and to what level? Is it our responsibility to support senior citizens and to what level? And Meals on Wheels, is that a government responsibility or is that, is that something that their nonprofits should support? So those are, you know, the decisions that we have to, we have to make as a council to make those. And Prairie Hills Transit is been kind of a sore spot because we're dealing with a nonprofit that at least last year and have not seen their funds. This year had 1.8 million dollars surplus in their, their account. And we were told that local has to come up with a match to support their, their programs or they don't get funded federally, the local community. And I did call DOT, state DOT, and found out that, no, it's the local transit company that has to come up with that money. They pass it on to the local community, so I have a little problem when people don't deal completely with 100% integrity and I just wanna get that out there. We also went through a, a series here with the, they're building a new transit facility here, a bus garage here in Hot Springs. We offered two locations for them. I got called on the carpet when I went to the tourism council, our tourism conference. I got a call from the deputy secretary of the department of transportation, you need to get over here, we need to talk about the bus facility. Why aren't you supporting Prairie Hills Transit? I had, we had a string of emails that both Kim and I had written to Prairie Hills Transit telling them that we had sites available, we would consider providing water and sewer and that would be our 35,000 dollar match or more to help you fund that. They decided they wanted to buy an existing facility and now they expect us to pay that 35,000. I'm a little hesitant to do that for two reasons. Because they have money in the bank, I suspect, unless they've spent that 1.8 million dollars this past year on, on things. And secondly, I don't trust them completely and totally, and so I.
Would they have to pay property tax?
No, and that's the other thing.
A quarter of a block, they'd be taken out.
That's right, they're taken off the tax.
Which is valued at a good amount.
Oh, boy.
I can guarantee that, I know for a fact.
And that might be something, can you give us the, as we discuss this in detail, get us the valuation of what that would be?
I will.
Because that will be our, also can be our end-kind contribution. And the other part that really bothered us last year, and I know Bob, you felt the pressure too as a council president, they called all the customers last year when there was an indication that we might not fund our matching funds and said that the city doesn't support, called the city council, called the mayor.
Threatened to discontinue service.
And so the calls that I got were of elderly people that weren't.
Old age group?
That, that were in, in fear of losing a very valuable service. And certainly, we gotta understand that they do provide a valuable service to the people that can't get around, but it's, it just not, it just wasn't a very good tactic and didn't set very well with a way to, to do that. And certainly, if there's a need and they can justify that need, I think there's not probably one person in here that would hesitate maybe to up that, to make sure that the people that need to get to doctor's appointments that have no other way, a handicap that, that they need, need that transportation, we get it. But when you got that much money in the bank as a nonprofit, that's a little hard to swallow. We're looking at a 55,000 dollar.
You know, they angered me to the point, I let you guys know how to help to buy it, you know, and organization like this coming to our community, although they provide a good service, I was, that's a lot of money we can put down on the glass and do a public transit system.
Yeah, you can start by driving buses in the city.
I'm not dead yet, I could do that. I do have a CD album, I do have a passenger endorsement on it.
So as far as the donation requests go, I just wanna remind then this council, those that weren't here, in 2018, it was decided that we would no longer solicit organizations to request donations from the city. In 2019, we built our budget taking some requests, but not soliciting requests from anyone. In 2020, we did not solicit requests for donations. I highlighted those that were established within the general fund after 2019 that are budgeted. We had also requests from the Boys and Girls Club and the 2-on-1 helpline without going out and saying, please request money from us, they just did. But there, if, had we done what we had in the past and asked, we probably would have many more. And so if you get approached by any organizations that say, you know, the city didn't offer me this, it's because the decision was made after 2018's budget that we would no longer do that. We, we don't allow people to come and ask us for money to help raise funds for their group, although we have had these requests and so that's why they're presented in that way. Inward, I, I certainly am not saying any of them are better than the others, they're all needed in our community, they all provide a valuable service, but we have a lot of services that we have to provide too, which include the roads that the transit mobile drives on, the streetlights that light the way, the police that keep the roads safe, and so those are our priority.
How, how many years have we been giving Prairie Hills Transit money in?
As far back as this new fund accounting software goes, which is 2011, but I think it was even before that.
And average amount can we save?
Uh, it's differed because sometimes we, they request like 10,000 towards a bus. Like this year, it's 10,000 for operating and 25,000 towards this new facility, so it's varied significantly.
They didn't fuss with this much. They were asking 15,000?
Last year?
It was the year there was either 10 or 15, and I believe it was 2016. We, for the 2017 budget, we dropped it down to 5,000. And that was the first time that they went to the public and said, you need to contact the mayor and the city council because they only gave us 5,000 of the money that we asked. And my anger at them at the time was that in 2016, they still had all the money that was given to them for 2016, but they wanted to immediately stop, to start reducing services when they had their full year allotment. The response they gave was, well, we knew that we weren't gonna get as much in 2017, so we had to start cutting back to, you know, deal with the less money that we were beginning in 2017. So they've got, I think they've only gotten 5,000 in 2018 and 2019.
That is correct. 17 was 5,500, 16 was 5,000, 15 was 10,000, 14 was 9,500. 13, I don't know why, but it was 21, 49, 38. 2013 was 8,500 and 2012 was 8,500, and that's as far back as this accounting software goes, so.
Well, to me, to be very honest with you, if they had been thinking about this purchasing of a building, so they own it as opposed to the city helping them, at the point in time that you had the conversation that the city would help them like providing property and so on and so forth, you would think that they would have discussed with you or at least planted the seed that you could possibly be needing more than we have ever asked you before, rather than to take an aggressive way of pushing you into a position where you're trying to give them at least half of it.
Did you read what this meant? Where, you know, well, the land was worth more than that, so that's a big deal, give us that money, more or less what they said.
Yeah, well, the land is not a cash flow.
Yeah, no.
Open, concise communication has not been a core competency of theirs. No, and the property that they're discussing about purchasing, I'm not gonna lie, I'm gonna say it right out loud, it has been a problem spot for the city for quite some time.
Oh, boy.
And now you're talking about. And now you're talking about making it a public service business per se, and they are going to do the same kind of things that the city has gone through in the past, dealing with parking right up against the railing, just the headaches that we went through before. I see that being a problem because there, seriously, there is a whole bunch of room there for that size of a vehicle, to be serviced, washed, all the things that they want to do.
Where are they wanting to go?
Rick's Auto Repair.
That's on the left side.
Okay.
They want to use that to service all their buses.
That's what I'm saying. You know, the thing is, is all those vehicles are going to be parked on the street where there is no parking and that'll be a source of irritation for budget folks. And so I could, to be honest, that, if they were to purchase that, we're going to have some headaches in the future. And that's just, that's just the long story.
And just, you know, for everyone to know, for me, street repairs this year, that's one of the areas that we want to pave from Jennings down to university and then from university down to the Brookside, Long River Street and actually delineate parking spots so that when the street construction starts, we've got some additional spots outlined for people to park downtown and be able to walk to the businesses from a comfortable distance, so.
To me, that kind of business should be in a commercial industrial area. Obviously, we don't have what.
Unfortunately, if it's zoning.
But right downtown, it does not make the decision. So that's my opinion.
So Misty, on, like a business, when they pay their sales tax, do they go to the state and then the state sends us some?
Yes.
What do we get out of there, what do they pay, six and a half percent, Hot Springs?
Yeah, then we get two unless it's, unless it has the added municipal gross receipts tax amount or the tourism tax, which doesn't come to us at all.
Because I know we're losing two very good businesses in Marty's Tire.
Oh.
He moved to Oryx and then Norton's is close to the mall and both of them is very profitable.
Yeah.
Marty said he paid over ten thousand dollars in taxes on our street.
And we would have gotten two percent of that. It's really hard to estimate based on the, we can pull from the revenue, it just does it by industry classification, it won't do it by specific business, so it's hard to tell. You'd only hope that something else would come and fill that spot.
I don't know that, but we're losing, there's only going to be two body shops in town, two mechanics.
Is that lost or is that going to go to a different business?
No, Norton's is close to the mall.
No, I realize that, but is that business lost or is it just going to go to another business in town?
Properties will like that percent and all the employees.
Well, the property, the property tax.
So you're saying this business may be going to be later to become a business or whatever?
I mean, they won't be doing all of it, but it's hills.
You make a revenue on the.
Making, picking up, picking up the difference or is one of the other mechanics.
The only problem with hills is they don't pay the same sales tax fee from town and Marty, I mean, either private individual, Marty's shop.
When I get stuff done on there, they'll charge the same percent.
Really?
Where?
Hills up there that took over the.
Yeah, is that in the city limits?
University.
They're taking it to that cleaner too.
I'll have to ask.
Shouldn't be four percent.
But the state, you shouldn't have to pay thirty cents if it's not in the city. And buses delivered to the city, would that be different, would you, no?
No. Service is being provided outside of the city.
They didn't want to be harassed by some council.
They'd be like, that's village.
Okay, so are we going to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah.
Time meeting.